Good evening, everyone. We will be in open session. There is no permission to take any closed session. Please stand for the salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason to justice for all.
Item five, public comment. Please note the meeting is recorded and livestreamed at www.crpoc.org. Members of the public are entitled to speak on matters not on the agenda at this time. Please state your name and address and keep your comments concise, brief, and limited to five minutes or less. A maximum of 20 minutes is allotted to each subject not appearing on the agenda. The Brown Act restricts the Board from considering any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Members of the public are entitled to speak to any item on the agenda either immediately after the item is called by the Board President or following background information provided related to the item at the President's discretion. Each person is entitled to speak on any agenda item only once at any meeting. All the Board members may seek additional information, participation, and debate on any item before the Board shall be limited to members of the Board. Please fill out a comment card, which will be given to the Board President indicating the item you wish to address. Comments are limited to five minutes per individual and 20 minutes per item. Richard Neffson?
Richard Neffson, retired teacher, resident member of Park as well. And first, I would like to offer my congratulations to trustees Brown, Farrell, and Orla for their elections and reelections, also to trustee Wiltor for your selection as President of the Board, and wishing everyone a successful 2015. I'm here this evening to correct the record concerning some comments made by Ms. trustee Wiltor at the last month's Board meeting on November 18th, as also reported in the November 21st edition of the Community Voice. Ms. Wiltor made three claims, of those being, one, that RPCA was the source of the problems that arose in the 2012 election, beginning with the candidate interviews, that I told Ms. Wiltor that she would not win because she did not receive the RPCA endorsement, and also, a third point was about the importance of RPCA establishing a positive working relationship with the trustees. The first point I'd like to make is that when I became President in August of 2012, I quickly learned that there was significant differences in divisions among the trustees and district leadership well before any of the candidates were interviewed. Real quickly, in terms of the endorsement process that I was involved with in this RPCA work, on September 20th, the Rep Council, there was a motion to the Rep Council, on the floor, the Rep Council, to endorse Karen Polley, since it was understood that she would not be able to attend the interview because she was under doctor's orders to limit her physical activities. And then at that meeting, after the Rep Council made that endorsement, they then authorized the Executive Board to make any additional recommendations following the October 1st interviews. Following the Rep Council's decision, I asked Ms. Polley not to put out any of her literature, that RPCA had endorsed her reelection until after the interviews on October 1st were completed and RPCA formally announced whom it was endorsing, and that appeared in the October 18th Community Voice. And Ms. Polley honored my request as well. I then called and emailed candidates to let them know the process and decision reached by the Executive Board. The Executive Board's decision took into the account the interviews, the candidates' responses to a series of written questions, and input from Executive Board members who attended the 2012 Candidates Forum. My communications with all the candidates were cordial and polite, and not one candidate raised any objections with me about how I or RPCA conducted itself during or after the election, at no time before or after the candidate interviews that I ever tell Ms. Wiltor that she would not win the election because she did not receive the RPCA endorsement. I specifically told our leadership team in an email I sent to them on October 7th, I expected a positive campaign, and I also shared this point with trustee Gilardi also in an October 7, 2012 email. I fully agree with Ms. Wiltor's reported comments that it is important for the RPCA to have a positive working relationship with all the trustees. The following are some examples of how I reached out to Ms. Wiltor and the other trustees. On August 30th, 2012, I met with Ms. Wiltor at her RE/MAX office to discuss issues facing our district, and I sent her a thank you e-mail. Here is the last sentence of my August 30th e-mail. "Please note that you can always contact me to discuss your concerns about the direction of education in our district as a parent, engaged community member, and elected as a trustee. It is vital that I here understand the various perspectives from members of our community." On Monday evening, October 1st, 2012, between 10:00 and 10:30 that evening, following the candidates' interviews, Ms. Wiltor and I exchanged well-thank-you-appreciation emails for her attending the interview process, participating in the process. Following Ms. Wiltor's election, on Monday, November 26th, I met with Ms. Wiltor at Starbucks in the Roger Wilco Shopping Center as part of my outreach for all trustees and to continue our working relationship that began with the Measure D campaign in the spring of 2012. Not once during this post-election meeting did Ms. Wiltor ever complain or even note any negative comments that I am now accused of making to her. In addition to my meetings with Ms. Wiltor, I singled her out for special praise at a Board meeting for her efforts to help pass Measure D. Not only did I meet with Ms. Wiltor, I also met with other trustees, and some of those conversations lasted for three hours. I think we would all agree that people don't have a three-hour conversation in a public setting unless those conversations are cordial and constructive. I would like to conclude by paraphrasing a piece of wisdom that trustee Orla shared with me on more than one occasion. Again, the context has nothing to do with the current issues involving his last election, but I thought it really was very appropriate. He shared with me that adults need to be less concerned with advancing their own personal agendas and to truly focus on what is best for our students. I cannot agree with him more on that point. It is in that spirit that he hopes that all future communications among Board members and within the district and the community will focus on how best to advance the needs of our students, that any disagreements will be handled in a respectful manner without any party engaging in personal attacks. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Richard. Jen Balavich?
Good evening. My name is Jen Balavich. I live at 555 Highland Avenue in Penn Grove. I am here on behalf of Rixia, and I'm going to be presenting to all of you tonight the survey that was conducted in the spring of 2014 and the follow-up survey just now in November of 2014. This survey you'll be getting tonight, the purpose of it is to gain information of our members so we know where we're at. The goal of the survey, now that we have the hard numbers, is to, as we say in the classroom, is to drive our instruction and so figure out where we need to go from here. So, the history of this survey and kind of how it came about, and in the last couple of years, there's been a lot of member concerns and hardships that have been talked about at Rep Council. And in fact, that's why I got involved with Rixia a couple of years ago, is because there was a change in my working conditions, and things became harder, and time for collaboration became less. So, I got involved, and Rixia started going to the meetings to figure out what was going on and what could we do to make a difference and make a change. The same concerns, as I started attending, I wasn't even a site rep at the time, and I kept hearing the same concerns, month after month, and they weren't being resolved. And so, finally, at the end of last, well, around January of this past year, January, February, it was realized, okay, let's get a survey going, let's get some hard numbers, and so we had the survey done. So, one of the phrases that was common was the top-down management style, which is also addressed in this survey. And now the hard numbers are here. So, the first survey was given to the district in the spring of 2014, about six months ago, and with that, it was given with intention to make things better and to see some changes. As you read where we're at, we're in need of some change, the members. We were hoping to see some signs of that change, and if we didn't see signs of change, we're going to bring it to the Board, and here we are today with a survey for you. And so, we're presenting it to you, but in hopes to make things better. There is a summary page that kind of compares both the surveys, which can be helpful, and one of, number four, about the top-down management style in regards to curriculum and programs. In spring, it was 92% of our membership agreed that it was a top-down management style. In November, 71% agreed. Also, taking into account that some were not applicable, so it's still a similar style, a similar percentage, so please note the not applicable piece. We realize, our members realize that we want, we know you want what's best for the district, and we want what's best for the district too. However, the manner in how the past 20 programs that have come through the pike in two years and the way they've been implemented has created changes in teacher working conditions, and a lot of it has happened without the buy-in from the teachers or even a sure understanding of how the program works. So, we've been running pretty fast for the last two years. So, for example, a month or so after this survey was given to the district, we had our June 2nd Common Core training. All the teachers of the district were there, and we didn't have to write subplans, we were all there, present, ready to learn Common Core. What we were given was a new program that was essentially a marketing pitch for Sync Solutions. During this whole, elementary level was a two-hour presentation, a lot during that time, the teachers were wondering, is it bought yet, is it not, are they consulting us, is it not? By the end of the day, we realized that it probably was bought, we didn't even know, we figured it was, because a team, a summer team, was needed to align Sync Solutions to the Halt Mifflin Language Arts at the elementary level. And so, that kind of, it was another example of, okay, here we are, we have a program, don't know, okay, here, hopefully it will be good. I do have to say, that summer team, that week time that they worked on aligning the Sync Solutions with Halt Mifflin was super rigorous, it was hard work, and these teachers only got the pay of a time card and not per diem, and that's not right. So, Sync Solutions is definitely rigorous, it has a lot of testing involved, and it takes, testing time takes away from teaching time, so I think that's something we need to tap into, and that's on the survey too, how helpful Sync Solution is. So, again, with this survey, please recognize that with the style of management, the working conditions of teachers have been greatly impacted, and we are working harder, and we're working harder still at the pay of 2008. We do our best to keep up, keep positive, keep inspiring our students to learn, we also want to do our best to communicate to you where our members are at and where we can get better. So, we ask the Board, when you're approving payments for programs, curriculum, or consultants, please ask, is there buy-in from our teachers? And from the district, we ask to please consult more in depth with teachers before decisions are made with curriculum and programs. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Next up, Mahah Gregoretti.
Mahah Gregoretti, 1197, Sierra Circle, Ron Park. Tonight I'm here because I need to set the record straight, because some things that were said at the last Board meeting were simply not true. At the last Board meeting, trustee Wiltor accused Richard Neffson, the former President of our Teachers Association, of telling her that she would lose the election without our association's endorsement. I have worked closely with Richard Neffson for the past two years, and he has been coming to a fault. He would never speak that way to anyone, and I'm sorry that trustee Wiltor would say such things about such a decent man and a recent retiree of this district. He deserves more respect from trustee Wiltor, and I hope that she apologizes for her public comments about him. Additionally, the Ron Park Katati Educators Association, Rixia, was blamed for running a negative advertisement against trustee Mark Orla. This is also false. The Association was very mindful of the fact that our members teach trustee Orla's and former trustee Longmire's children, and we did not want to place our teachers or the trustees' children in an awkward position. So, even though we did not endorse trustees Longmire and Orla, we were not against them either. We never ran a negative ad about any of the Board candidates, we only ran ads that supported our endorsed candidate, trustee Brown. Furthermore, some trustees seem to think that pointing out differences between the candidates, including their positions, service to the community, and tenure is campaigning negatively. This is also not so. All candidates should run on their merits, and the voters get to decide which candidate will do the best job for the community. That's what happened, and it's time to move on. Trustee Gilardi deserves a lot of credit for leading the ethical campaigning discussion with the Board last time. Too bad, trustees Orla and Wiltor wouldn't agree to abide by the principles of ethical campaigning and instead use the discussion to attack trustees Gilardi and Brown. The Ron Park Katati Educators Association and parents advocating for stronger schools passed at that meeting. Clearly, in order for the Board to serve the students of this community, they will need to put aside their personal differences, past slights, or perceived slights, and get to work. Our students and our community deserve to have trustees that are sure enough to put the education of our kids first. Lastly, as the President of the Ron Park Katati Educators Association, I would be remiss if I did not remind you once again that our teachers have not had a raise since 2008. In fact, in the 2013-14 school year, this district's educators had a 5.29% pay cut. Most significantly, this was the only district in Sonoma County to still have salary cuts in 2013-14. This year, many neighboring districts have already received raises. Bennett Valley received a 4.75% raise, Sinabar received a 3% raise, and Roseland received a 5% raise, just to name a few. You must do better for the educators in this district. All the money that is spent on independent contractors and programs teachers don't use needs to be redirected to our salaries. Personnel, not programs, is our new mantra, because educators and CRP USD are way overdue for a raise.
Thank you, Mahah. Laney Lowry.
Laney Lowry, 6191, San Carlos Court, Ron Park. Tonight I want to talk briefly just about communication, and I was, I don't know if I was astounded or not surprised at all that the issue that I spoke at at the last meeting was different Board members reported out to our officers didn't know anything at all about the special education problems. So, communication is what I want to talk about, not that. That's going to be dealt with, unfortunately, it appears it's going to be dealt with at a cost to the district and our time. That could be easily resolved, but I'm not here to talk about that. Communication. One thing that some of you have heard in the past couple of weeks is, we can't share things, CTA advises us, with you unless you request it, and we are glad to share as much as we can. Our officers are doing a great job of trying to open up communication lines. CTA has reported to us, for example, that all five of you can meet with our teachers at different schools together in a social way. Certainly want to be advised about that, but we have the law, we'll be glad to share that with you if you ask us about it. And Mahah's been, last time, talked about the 21% that goes to that one area of curriculum and other things, and I know that Ann Barron will be glad to share with you the other things that it goes into, but the point is that we're spending 21% of our budget on that instead of the average 11. I'm sure somebody will explain why that is. That's one thing that I'm getting a little testy about, because what I hear is explanations, and I'm not seeing some action. And the one thing I want to use as a sort of analogy, because I'm not going to talk about the special education, is the one that I alluded to last time. In our original contract, it said 300 to 1 ratio for counselors, or there will be a lead. We have a trustee who went to our high school when we were at about 1500, when we had five counselors, and she might try to recall how easy it was to get to the counselor and how often they could come. In 2002, we spent five days with this school district, this bargaining team, discussing just that issue and the problems that are there. So, think about that analogy and carry it over into other areas. In 2011, we agreed to up our O-ridges to 160. That was taken full advantage of, and I recall, two years ago, I had 175 students, an average of 35 per English class. And one day, about this time of year, I was asked to use my prep period to cover a class, and I walked into it, and it was an AP class of 18 students. The next day, I asked my students about that, and they said, oh, that's not the smallest class here, we have 11 in our AP Spanish class. But I think the AP program is great, but you need to realize that these numbers that we're talking about in bargaining in different places, it's not to make the workload lighter. The first 15 years that I worked here, I could assign freshmen composition a week, and every book I've ever read over the last 40 years about how to teach English well, frequent compositions. So, you need to really regard especially the issue that's in front of us. These numbers are not that we're trying to reduce the teacher workload, the numbers are all about students being able to be served properly, and that's your lookout, that's your responsibility to make sure that happens and not simply to help the budget a little more by overloading their workload. And if I haven't said this before, I'm married to a retired special education teacher, and I can tell you that as I was sitting at the kitchen table grading essays, she would go hours working on those IEPs because those have to be done correctly. Now, I have just one more thing, because I'm here to talk about communication, and I know that you should be hearing from your district administrators about physical reports, and you should be hearing about it, in my opinion, month after month. And this is a very conservative organization which shares their reports, it's the School Services of California. And I remember about 25 years ago, I went with a couple of Board members, I think Eric, and I can't remember who the other person is, and we went to the January meeting of school services, and I was glad to be with all those Republicans and conservatives about finances, because it helped me to understand where things were. Well, I would like you to see this one, and if the district can't share it with you, please contact me, I'll make copies of it, because this is dated, November 26, 2014, and just the headlines, Proposition Outlook is Especially Favorable, State Revenue Growth Strong in the Near Term. Proposition 98 Goes Up, Up, and Away. And of course, we know that we'll have to say, yes, that's true for the state, but remember for Katati Ron Park. Well, there's going to be good news and better news in the Governor's budget, you know that, and there's going to be even better news in June. And the last thing I want to leave you with, and I'm not bargaining here, I'm going to just give you a little bit of what I think would be good political advice, maybe not just political advice, but you keep hearing Mahah, and we're going to chant that until it happens, because you promised three times in the last 11 months there will be a raise. You got the money, you can find it, and since you put that in your documents three times, the superintendent twice in letters to teachers, and it's been in Board notes, here's what I think would be a nice thing and a smart thing to get us all working together a little better would be, before I have to come here in May, or whenever it is, and present my re-opener on wages, that this district would step up, figure out the dollar, the percent, so that if, because if we have to come and we have to bargain, you didn't give us the raise, you made us do what we've done for all these years, let's play find the money. Instead of doing that, you have this opportunity. Again, please ask us for any information, we'll be glad to share it with you, and hopefully our administrators will also. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gilardi. 96 presentations. So, seven communications, four public reports. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown, a couple of things. I was invited and went and saw Credo's winter play, and what was unique about it, as I was watching them, thinking, where did they get the younger kids? Were they brothers and sisters? And then finally, I woke up to the fact that they're from other schools. And so, it was kind of a collaboration of a K through 12 event type of thing. So, that was neat, and I would hope that we could maybe leverage off of that idea and do that with our drama or band or whatever. I know we used to have our band program. But what was unique there too is they incorporated music, live music with a play, which is unique, they had four violins playing, and it was pretty, the whole concept of pulling all levels of it, the district together were great that time. Then also, I had lunch today with the teachers at Hawn, and it was fun seeing Jerry Dale and Judy Davison is coming back, working part-time, so they both recognized me and wanted to say hi to Janice and want to know how our kid were doing. So, that's kind of fun going back and seeing a few of our more experienced, long-term teachers still there. And there was just so much energy too with the younger teachers too, they were, I didn't get a chance to talk to everybody in the larger room, and they were bustling in and then bustling out in the new room, so teachers' life is fast and furious, and I got that sense from there, so that's what I had.
Yes, I've visited quite a few classrooms in the last few weeks. A few weeks ago, I was at, I was here and visited a history class, Bill Bowers, and I was in Mr. Gregoretti's, I believe, science class, I learned a little bit about Fogg Patterns, and I thought that was valuable time spent. I've also, just this past week, spent some time at both Waldo and Reed, learning quite a bit, I was in quite a few classrooms. I want to thank both the principal and the AP for showing me around, I appreciate it, learned quite a bit in those visits. I got to see some Tepai basketball because my son's on the team. I got to see some Tech High basketball because my son's on the team. And that's about it. Thanks.
I attended the facilities meeting. There's a lot of exciting plans in the works for this district, and I think Rob will probably fill us in a little more about the board behind him. But yeah, the bond measure we passed is going to really do a lot of really exciting things for this district and it's going to make our, you know, learning environments for our teachers a much better place. My only wish is that we could do it a lot faster.
Jesse, go.
I took a couple of days with Dr. Haley and got to go around and meet all the principals at the school sites. We went to every single school site, and I got to see some programs I'd only heard about, the CTE classes over at Rancho. I got to see the Tech High campus, which I hadn't seen before, and the Flex Academy at Rancho, which trustee, former trustee Wonmeyer told me a lot about. So it was nice to go see those for myself and get a feel of the district.
I also got to participate in the facility committee meeting. Great things are coming our direction. Last week, I went to Rancho Katati to a leadership meeting, and we've got some great things happening. We're going to form a committee, a CTE committee, work with all and in very closely in our leadership team, and try to bring in more community members and see if we can create some internships for our students. Also went to the Credo play. It was a very, a very good play. Thank you, very talented students. And also attended Waldo Runner at last week and checked out their classrooms. Thank you for allowing me to come in and check that out. And I'm going to some more with the new year stuff.
So now we are on to the student board memo reports. Start with Morgan Nelson.
Hi. One of our main community outreaches that we did, or community events that we did in Rancho was our annual canned food drive. It began on November 12th and it ended this past Wednesday, December 3rd. Our goal was to raise 15,000 pounds as a school, and we by far exceeded our goal and we raised 27,549 pounds. So we donated that to the NOAA Food Pantry here in Runner Park, right across the street from Rancho. It was a competition between grades and teachers, and at the end, the juniors raised the most with 11,091 pounds. The sophomores next raised 7,293 pounds. The freshmen raised 4,533 pounds, and the seniors raised 4,500 pounds. Our first place teacher was Ms. McCoy and our second place teacher was Mr. Anderson. Ms. McCoy received the trophy that she gets to keep for a year, which is a big wooden can, gets to keep in her classroom. And Mr. Anderson and Ms. McCoy both received one paid day off of school. Along with the end of the canned food drive last week, we also had our Spirit Week leading up to our winter rally on Friday, December 5th. In the rally, we had the winner of the poetry contest at Rancho, performance poem. We had the boys soccer team announced. We had the winter sports captains announced, and finally, the annual class airbands. The juniors came in first with, it was the theme of decades, so the juniors had the 80s and they came in first. The seniors came in second with the 70s. The sophomores came in third with the 60s, and the freshmen came in fourth with the 90s. We had staff members with experience from each decade, Judge, Ms. Carter, Ms. Cook, Mr. Bianco, and Mr. Lowry. This, in addition to Spirit Week and the canned food drive, finished off the Spirit Point competition. Juniors came in first, followed by the sophomores, then the seniors, and the freshmen. The juniors will receive a free lunch provided by ASB for winning the first semester of Spirit Point Award. The CSF, California Scholarship Federation, their toy drive, it's the first year they've done it, it's very successful, and it's, this is the last week, it's ending on Friday. The Fall Sports Awards was last night in the gym at Rancho, and it awarded all the teams for their seasons this fall and smaller athletes, et cetera. The second quarter ends December 18th, and our winter break is from December 19th to January 5th. All the way in January, we have our parent and student step-up nights for eighth graders. So the parent's step-up night is January 21st, and the student's step-up days are the 22nd and 23rd of January, where the eighth graders come to Rancho and we give them tours. Mostly, students and teachers are just preparing for finals and getting ready for winter break.
Thank you, Morgan. Roger?
As we progress further into the winter seasons, students at Tech High have quickly dedicated their extra time to helping the community. For the past several weeks, the NOAA Food Bank has been staffed solely by Tech High students. December 5th was the Sonoma County Dream Walk, which was done in association with the Social Advocates for Youth SE, which is a group of individuals dedicated to a community of, say, children, teenagers, and healthy families. This Thursday, all seniors are participating in Capa Night, which is corrective and preventative action. Basically, it's a 24-hour event where students are kept at school, in the form of an engineering disaster that's occurred, and then they're to perform an in-depth root cause analysis on the issue. All my friends, and I guess really all my peers really, are really looking forward to it, and we're excited to see how the night goes. Students are slowly finishing up projects for National History Day, which has practically become a Tech High tradition now. Last year, 29 in Tech High students traveled to Sacramento to present their studies, and a significant amount of the group placed to obtain a variety of awards. Students are just about halfway through their science fair projects this year, and some of the work being done is absolutely incredible. It's amazing to see how dedicated individuals are in finding a solution to an issue, and we look forward to inviting everyone to come and view final projects in the middle of February. Everyone seems to be doing well with finals next week. The winter break will definitely be a nice period for relaxation and catching up on some well-needed rest. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. And indeed, Chief Business Official's report?
Well, we're happy it's raining, but somehow, the weather did not get the message that it's supposed to rain at night, so projects can't be moved.
And on weekends.
And on weekends. Oh, well, that's what we have to deal with, and it certainly, the weather was allowed for in the various developers' plans. The city of Runner Park has on their agenda tonight two boundary, if you will, or property-related items. One is for the Little Glen, Glen Project South of Cannon Manor. The other is the Northwest Pacific planning area. So we'll be monitoring those to see how they play out for our district. I attended the Runner Park Tree, Christmas Tree lighting on Saturday and was very pleased to see Theoria States was there with the booth. So that's the apartment complex over near the old district office, and they are heavily pre-leasing, and we are very hopeful that we'll be generating some students from that project. Certainly, their leasing agent was very optimistic. So we will continue to monitor the other projects and have more details as the year Very exciting last week. It's like, oh, it's done, we almost forget about it. Our refunding of our bonds. We refunded about $38 million worth of bonds. Both, these are from the original 1990 authorization, not the new bonds we sold in September. This refunding is going to save the taxpayers in our community $3.7 million over the next 12 years. We were able to accomplish the refunding without extending the term of the bond, so they still will be fully paid off in the year 2026. So that's very exciting. That's a very, you know, that's, we're basically saving 10 percent of the base amount of bonds. That's really huge, and we're very grateful to our financial advisors for doing the work they're supposed to do and bringing us this opportunity to save money in this favorable interest rate environment because it's not going to last forever. At some point, rates will go up. So very glad we were able to take advantage of this and have a creative structure as well. So that was good news. And you'll hear enough from me later on the board, so that's enough.
Assistant Superintendent of Education Services report?
So you have two things in front of you, well, three things actually. The first is a letter that I sent out last minute, last night, with many apologies. We have had the opportunity to apply as part of a team with the Child Parent Institute and the City of Runner Park for a grant that would help us fund mental health support and counseling, parent outreach with CPI at John Reed, Waldo, and Tech Middle School as a beginning for support district-wide and a model for the county. So you have my letter, which I hope I can send on behalf of our district, and you have the backup that the City of Runner Park is also providing because they viewed this tonight at 5:30. So we learned last Thursday that we had some permission to apply most of the funding to homeless students, so we had thought we wouldn't be able to apply, but we were asked by Supervisor Zane to go ahead and submit an application. She'll be writing a letter on our behalf as well. And so you have that, and you also have our district grading policy. It was, you know, we've been talking creatively about, you know, what does it mean when we say that all students are in touch with a successful education, and how do we know that all of our students are learning, and what is the role that grades play in that? And, you know, as we look, continuing to look at how we're communicating with parents and students about grading, what, you know, what do those grades mean, and how do we roll that out in a way that is uniform and understandable to families? So we went back and started looking at our own grading policy, and we'll be looking at it more as an administrative team. I also have a special bias, I guess, and even I would like to share that bias a little bit. I provided you with some research that provides, I don't know how great the research is, but it provides examples that other states and other districts have used examining the role of the zero in grading policies and what that does at times to students' learning trajectories. And so a lot of times, when we discuss that, a grade is a reflection at times of achievement, but also of effort. And when we're providing students with zeros, what does that mean, and how might we look differently? So this is just for your own, it's an easy read, and so I have the opportunity to get a soapbox once in a while, so I just, you know, put my propaganda in, and those are my items for the evening.
Part of the discussion about grading, if we have students that are accuracy failure or failing, and we want to create intervention programs, that's put forward, you know, we need intervention programs. We have to have some understanding of why they're there because we could have a student that's failing for noncompliance, who could achieve very high academically if he or she chose versus a student might not be achieving because, let's say, they're in ninth grade but they're reading at third grade level. So how you intervene with those two types of students would be very different. They both might need an intervention program, but what kind? If they're in the same small group or in the same after-school class or whatever the intervention is, our approach to them would be probably not likely to succeed. So we need to get an understanding of, you know, if we hear a certain school has, you know, at the first quarter, 40 percent of the students live in that, okay, well, we have to have an understanding that what's generating that, what's driving that, and then we can work with them. So what we really want is this conversation taking place at all our schools, with the principals, with the teachers, among grade level teams, among departments, really looking at how are we grading students? How are we communicating? Because that's a communication vehicle with students, communication vehicle with a parent, and we want to make sure that we're using it as a tool of all forms of bargaining. Just a beginning point of the conversation.
Seven F's, the three general reports.
So continuing our tradition that we established, we have a marketing program that we've been doing and the radio spots, I don't know that everybody hears all the stations on Sonoma Media Group, so I have the sunburn to add, and I think I can just handle it from here.
Hi, I'm Robert Haley, Superintendent of Katati Runner Park Unified School District. We believe all students are entitled to a successful education. Our focus is learning, and we are a team. We're proud to be a district creating innovative programs, opening schools, attracting students, and preparing them for college and careers. We have a strong academic program designed to reach all students and give them a solid foundation in the core subjects. We also have a strong enrichment program with music, physical education, libraries, computer labs, and academic support designed to provide all of our students with a well-rounded education. This reflects our commitment as a school district to our vision. And now, parents from Runner County are choosing Katati Runner Park Schools as the place to send their children to get a great education. We encourage you to visit our schools as open enrollment begins in January. Check out CRPUSD.org for more information. Happy holidays, enjoy the season, and we'll see you in the new year, Sonoma County. Katati Runner Park Unified School District, learning for a lifetime.
Hey. Happy holidays. Keep it short this time. That's our marketing.
Good, that's good. Item eight, we get a motion to approve consent of general items P through H.
So move.
You get a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Question carries. I am nine, educational services. Any public comment?
Elliot Enriquez is here. If you have any questions from Health and Health Center.
I just want to say that it's exciting to see that we've brought this partnership here to the school district. I know it was talked about what your patient does to kick off her cradle to career a couple years ago, so welcome, and I think it's definitely a valuable service to be used this district.
Thank you. We are very excited as well. This is our first venture as Pedaluma Health Center, that we enter into contract, this MOU with the school district. Prior to me working at Pedaluma Health Center, I worked for the Redwood Community Health College, which is a network that manages every single community health center in Sonoma Napula and Noguelo. And during my tenure there, I developed and I created this program in four or five different school districts in Sonoma County, and we saw some amazing results. Our goal is really to ensure that every single student and child in Sonoma County has access to affordable health insurance, a medical help home, and count fresh food stamps so that they can have a healthy start in life and really have that opportunity to attain their academic goals. And we do that, and we do that every day at Pedaluma Health Center. And it's an honor for us to provide these services at, you know, free of charge. We don't charge a family a dime for any of the services that we do, and we're there for the community. We're here to support, especially for us becoming a new member here in Runner Park. We will be opening up a new, brand-new state-of-the-art community health center in July of 2015. So it's an honor for us to partner with you guys and we look forward to working with every teacher.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Any other questions regarding the program?
It's above the Kaiser.
Right above the Kaiser, that's correct. Yeah. Yeah. Perfect, thank you for your time.
Brilliant.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Pedaluma Health Center? You get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Question carries. And the overview of district program improvement and plan evaluation, evaluation first.
Well, this is just an informational item. It is part of our federal program monitoring. We are required to annually evaluate our plan based on state metrics, and it was challenging for me to do that, as I noted, because the metrics have changed and the plans have changed. So this is my best effort, and I'm quite certain that when I load it in the federal program monitoring device, we're gaily load it, depending on which one of us wins, it will meet the federal obligations that I am required to address. So that's why you got it.
I have nine C.
Nine C is a continuation of the inter-district agreement that we, that you all signed prior to our arrival to enable us to continue to do inter-districts with other districts, and it still allows us, the local authority, to approve and deny as we have been these past four years.
Want to get a full agreement of participants? Want to get a proposal of agreement of participating school districts in Sonoma County regarding inter-district attendance, 2015-16 to 2019-20.
I move to approve the agreement of participating school districts in Sonoma County regarding inter-district attendance, 2015-16 to 2019-20.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item personnel services, item A, ratification of personnel action report 1415-5A, certificated. Any questions? Can I get a motion?
I move we ratify personal action report 1415-5A.
You get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B, ratification of personal action report 1415-5B, classified. Can I get a motion?
I move we ratify personal action report 1415-5B, classified.
You get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Ratification of substitute teacher 2014-15 salary schedule to replacement of returning teacher retirees. Can I get a motion? Or any questions?
So this was prompted by, well, actively trying to make sure we can get as many subs and the more qualified subs that we can get, of course, will be better. We love working with recently retired teachers. They have to follow the rules with STIRS. Anytime we change our substitute schedule, we may need to bring that to you. There are a variety of reasons. One of which includes how it impacts other employees in certain situations, and so having a fair published schedule that we follow is important. Then you've also asked, and we've done some research, we had a request at the last meeting, you know, how much are other districts paying their subs? So we do have some information on that that we can bring to you in the future that might inform you whether or not you want to make a change. This is a period of fluctuation. Different districts are looking at their sub rates and wanting to compete with other districts, so I think we need to double-check the rates in all of the districts. At this point, we're not recommending a change to our regular rate, but that might be something we need to look at in the spring. Regardless, we're actively seeking more qualified substitutes. I met one earlier today, who's signing up, an retired teacher from local.
Great. Any motion?
I move we ratify the substitute teacher 2014-15 salary schedule to replacement of returning teacher retirees.
You get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 11, business and operations services, any public comments? Item B, adoption of resolution 14-15 regarding accounting of developer fees for the 2013-14 fiscal year in the problem fund, capital facilities fund, Fund 25.
So this is an item we bring you every year at this time. We're required to...
She's right there.
We're required to annually...
She broke it.
So basically, we have to say, this is what we collected, and here's what we did with the money. You have the report in your packet. It was posted following the required timeline. And then you also have, so that's the last part of this item, actually going through the developer fees we collected and all the different facilities related costs we spent it on, spent the money on, mostly related to reopening Tech Middle School and La Piesta. So those expenditures started in the summer of 2013, after July 1st, so in the 2013-14 fiscal year. And then some expenditures were made next summer. Since that time, going into this fiscal year, we spent most of the rest of the money. So, you know, we've done wireless district-wide, bought furniture. Some of the people are sitting on some of the furniture in this room, there's new tables. So a lot of different costs related to expand the district and reopening schools. And then the resolution is just language that is, that your, the board is required to make findings that the money was used appropriately, and that we publish the report as required. So something we'll be bringing every year, we hope. We didn't bring it, but we need the underwriting.
Do we get a roll call, please?
I have a question. Question. Are we done? So we spent $271,000 here. Are we done with facility improvements at this campus? Are we going to have to do more if, as the school expands?
We will probably.
We'll need to do more.
Okay. And what, in desks and that kind of stuff? Or what are you saying? We need to do more?
Well, it, a little bit ties in with our 12A item overall with our facilities planning.
Okay, so...
Because we use different funding sources to do different projects, depending on what the restrictions are, what's the best, you know, which dollars are best used first. So looking at this campus, you know, we could use current measure B funds, we could use whatever maybe got from the 1990 authorization. Because it's program expansion, we can use developer fees. We like to use those right away. But some of the things we would look at would be the old shop and mini-gym, which got taken over by maintenance. So we'd like to be able to move maintenance out of there and get those back as learning spaces for students with the older existing part of the campus. With, you know, at this point, we don't have room for more students, so if we're going to increase the enrollment here, we'll have to increase the amount of classrooms that we have. Right now, the easiest way, most cost-effective way to do that, whether or not we want to continue with it for long term, would be to rehab K-wing portables, which sit over there. So we have the K-wing and the L-wing. I think there are 11 total portables. The L-wing's mostly been taken over by maintenance and IT, but the K-wing is for the most part empty or just storage. You have an empty room, you put stuff in it. But it would take some work to rehab those, to open it, it would take some furniture.
And in the short run, at least, we would have to leave space that helps some of it stored there. It's not, the things that are stored there are records of the district, so it's not...
Yeah, some of the, some of the, some of the rooms are just filled with, well, we have some old whiteboards, we have some old desks, we have stuff we can move around. Some have very valuable district records that we have to retain somewhere. So if they're not there, we can do some where else.
You want to, judges? Trusty Brown?
Yes.
Trusty Farah?
Yes.
Wait, wait, wait.
I move we adopt resolution 1415-15 regarding accounting of developer fees for the 2013-14 fiscal year in the following fund, capital facilities fund, Fund 25.
I'll second that.
Trusty Brown?
Yes.
Trusty Farah?
Yes.
Trusty Gilardi?
Yes.
Trusty Orloff?
Yes.
Trusty Wiltman?
Yes.
Item 11B, adoption of resolution 1415-16 authorizing competitive negotiation for E-rate priority one data circuits.
So the E-rate process is probably one of the more Byzantine things we deal with here in public education. It is regulated by the Federal Communications Commission. It's federal law. There's also a piece of state law. And we, like most other districts, use a consultant, Infinity Consulting, which is on that consultant list we brought last time, to help us with the filings, because they are our king, and it makes sense for someone who does that all the time and who knows the timelines and who knows exactly what you have to submit to be approved. So our consultant, we are, we are at a point in time, it's been five years, where we have to go out and get bids. This is not an avenue where you want to necessarily take the lowest-cost bid. It is, there are telecom providers who may have the lowest-cost bid because you're not going to be happy with what you get. So the point of this resolution is to get authorization from the board for competitive negotiation for those services so that we can make sure that what we end up with will actually meet the needs of the district.
Any motion?
I move we adopt resolution 1415-16 authorizing competitive negotiation for E-rate priority one data circuits.
You get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Or, sorry, global?
We have a key.
Trusty Brown?
Yes.
Trusty Farah?
Yes.
Trusty Gilardi?
Yes.
Trusty Orloff?
Yes.
Trusty Wiltman?
Yes.
Item 12, board services, any public comment? Item A, physical facilities, anything?
Item one, we'll hold a board discussion about the first item in the report, if that's okay, which is our 2014 district budget. Item two, local control accountability plan. I don't think we really have anything new this month.
No, the principals are about to get an email that we have to do some site-level work, but I don't think I pressed send on this day.
We've been doing some training.
And there's a new template. Yes, a whole new template.
And we enforce that every county is handling this differently.
Yes, and I have this one under the sector.
And curiously, when I went to the training, our district, they pre-put name tags and everything. And our district was right up front and in the center. And I wasn't sure how to take that.
It wasn't...
I wasn't.
You were leading the way.
I was by myself, I find out.
You were in front of the room.
I felt like I was in trouble.
The next item, substitute costs. This was a request at the last board meeting. We have some information that we can share. We're looking at the best way to format some of the other data points. Let this come around. Let T D O Bear explain what your spreadsheet shows. It's a spreadsheet, very important.
Well, so this spreadsheet is really just summary data, looking at total district expenditures, going back to 2012-13, 2013-14, and then the budget for the current fiscal year, and some high-level summarization of the categories of substitutes. So the first and the largest category is sick leave and personal necessity. And I put some explanatory notes at the bottom. So basically, teachers get 10 days of paid sick leave each year, one day per month. Unused sick leave carries over to the following year with no limit. So this is quite a bit different than the private sector, where typically it's a half, and you get to a month or something, and then you don't earn anymore unless you take some. Here, it's unlimited. And that's something I think most people don't realize while working in public education. So I thought that...
I mean, before, so do we account for those unlimited liabilities?
No.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a district liability, it's a state liability.
Well, it is and it isn't. So, so when someone retires, they don't get cashed out. Instead, they can convert their unused sick leave balance to service credit.
Okay.
So they can get, you know, a half year or a year, or however much they have of additional service credit with STIRS. So in the end, that really means everyone pays. It's part of what's built into the rates for STIRS.
Okay. So in the private sector, where you cash out basically whatever you have, here, it's not, it's not a liability you have to put on a spreadsheet, it's a balance sheet.
The state does, because they're, they're...
Well, it's part of the actuary of calculation for STIRS, for knowing that you've got these claims coming in. Then we use the term PN, which stands for personal necessity, or also called no-tail days, meaning that a client can be absent without having to give a reason. It can be anything from the water heater leaking, and I have to stay home for the plumber. And really, under our contract, which, our contract language is a little broader than the education code, the teacher really doesn't have to agree with it. So...
Well, it depends. It's a little complex.
Yes.
But we don't really like to be in the same complex.
So personal necessity days are deducted from sick leave. Our contract currently allows RIPSAM members to take up to 10 personal necessity days per year, and then for service credit. So looking at, I broke down the substitute pay, the payroll-driven costs, so STIRS or FICA, workers' comp, unemployment, Medicare, is what's in the statutory costs, and then the total. So you can see, 1213, the subpay was almost $172,000, driven costs of another 17.5, so a total of $190,000 for this district. In 2013-14, it went up to $197,000. And for this year, $275,000. But there's some inconsistency between the categories. So this year, we have another category called long-term substitutes. Long-term subs are typically if an employee's out for a disability, whether it's paternity leave or some other kind of leave. So in our budget, it looks to me for this year as if we have blended those two categories together. We do spend, we have a lot of long-term absences, more than I would have realized. We have young teachers who are having children, and then we have other teachers who have had significant health issues. And really, the way the sick leave length provisions are designed to work, you accumulate all your sick leave. Well, if you have cancer or a heart attack or something or surgery and need to be out for a long time, you could have six months of sick leave. You're getting paid, and so is the substitute. So it's a pretty expensive deal for the district, but that's the education code. So total sub-cost, sick leave PN, both long-term and short-term, $300,000.
You'll notice when, you know, so we have the personnel registers every month. And if you look closely, you'll see leaves on there. We don't disclose a lot of information there, but we do have to keep track of that, disclose that publicly. A teacher, well, and this is, this was focused on certificated, we could do a report on classified. The rules are a little bit different, but for the most part, the same. So if I have, let's say, 20 days of sick leave accumulated, I get my full pay, and the district pays the sub for 20 days. If I continue to be out, let's say, another 20 days, I go into what is called differential pay, meaning the district's going to deduct the cost of the substitute from what I would pay. So I'm still in paid status, I'm still being paid an amount between where my salary is and whatever the district pays the sub. And that can last for up to five months before an employee would go into a different kind of setting.
So that's the difference in the private sector. You've used up, in the private sector, if you've used up all your sick leave, you don't get paid anymore. Here, you do get differential pay.
They're, 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 yeah, and things like that.
Well, we definitely encourage our employees, and they have an opportunity to meet annually with a representative.
Two disability programs, the standard.
I have disability insurance, I have, encourage people to consider disability insurance.
So does the district have to follow the FMLA laws?
Yes. So the next category, so that, so that's running us $300,000 here, so long. Then we have the category of substitutes for not illness, but other kinds of leave. It's everything from jury duty, grievance leave, IDP and SST meetings, other kinds of release time. So when we have the education summit, the teachers become, the subs in their classroom. When we get, give them release time for benchmarking, they have to pay the sub who's in their classroom while they're off doing other work. So that category runs us about $130,000 a year, all told, between the subpay and the driven costs. Substitutes for negotiations, and I believe that our classification between these two categories has probably not been perfect. But when the negotiations happen during the day, the bargaining team gets substitutes, someone's got to be with their students.
And we do try to keep track of this separately for mandated cost reporting purposes?
Well, we don't need to anymore, now we're on a clock.
But that would be the rationale?
Yes. So, so that's, it really depends on how many bargaining sessions we have. So it's ranged from $1,000 to $6,000 last year. And we budget it sort of half in the middle this year. And then in addition, there are substitutes for workshops or training that happen during the school year. the school year, and, you know, we've been doing a lot of work to try and improve rigor and capacity, so if you look at 1213, that total was about $95,000, and in 1314, about $60,000. Our budget for this year is about $36,000. Part of that is that some activities are better suited to release days, other activities can be done by paying the teacher extra duty pay for working after school. So, it partly depends on where we are in the cycle of learning new things or doing new things, so. Some of it also is that we spent the categorical money that we were using for some of this, so when we run out of money, we can't do it anymore.
I was going to point out, some of these costs are, they're not unrestricted general fund, a lot of these dollars could be restricted general fund.
Certainly the training, the paying, yes.
For the sub-costs associated with whatever categorical program called for. So, we are looking at some other reports, we want to make sure that, you know, whatever we provide you is meaningful in terms of some usage statistics, and right now, we don't really have a way of generating that, but I think it's helpful, so we'll keep looking at that. You know, there are a lot of different reasons that sick leave gets used, and what type of teacher or employee, at what time in their life, you know, we mentioned children, if you've got, you know, kids, and your kids get sick, somebody's got to take care of the kids. So, different things come up as people go through their life cycle. You know, in general, we would want our employees, there's, you know, an overall lifelong incentive to retain as many days as they can. You know, if, over time, you're able to bank a lot of your own sick leave time, as CBO Barron mentioned, it can benefit you at retirement, or it does benefit you when something really unfortunate happens, and you've got that salary protection that you will have. That's as much as we have for this month.
And realistically, you know, on a payroll, if it's looked at 18 million, this is about 2%, so this looks within operating of a district. I mean, the only other comparison you could say is what other districts are doing, but I mean, if you have 300 teachers, it's roughly a thousand dollars cost per employee, I don't think that's out of line at all. And when we're, if you have a 2% absentee rate, I mean, we double lose 3% with our kids, you know, attending school roughly.
Our historical allowance for absences is eight substitute days per teacher. That seems to be a trend, it's worked pretty well, so it kind of averages out. Certainly, we have a lot of employees who take those accounts.
And there's going to be times, like Rob said, when you're unfortunate, you get old, or you've got lovely little kids at home that bring germs.
They make music.
Yeah, right. As they move out of the house, the house becomes germy. The only other comparison would be just to see what other, you know, are there industry norms? You know, is 2% realistic, you know, compared to... It seems realistic.
I don't know, I don't want to invest too much staff time in it, I think it's important to look at, but, you know, that might be something you could find out from other CBOs.
I think you'd have to do the survey, it's more detailed than is in the board's financial report, so.
The next item looks at substitutes from, or absences from a different point of view. The question was, with A-2A, which is, we implemented a couple of years ago to try to increase our average daily attendance, thereby increasing revenue that we get from the state, increasing the amount of time that you're absent. It's difficult to know something like that, you know, directly saying, oh, our ADA was this in this year, we implemented A-2A, and our ADA is this in the next year, so therefore any change is A-2A responsible. Well, no, because we make other changes too, you know, so, but we thought it'd be interesting to say, what is that in calculation? We know the hard cost is A-2A, and so we know how much we have to change ADA to improve that cost before we're theoretically benefiting. So, I asked CBO to calculate that for us.
Right, and it's more difficult under the local control funding formula, because you don't really know your revenue per student in the same way we used to under the revenue limit, because it's part of the state calculation, includes former categorical programs. So, to keep it simple, I just said, we know our total control funding formula, revenue, we know what our total ADA is, projected to be for this year, divided, it comes out to an average of $7,375 per ADA. So, if A-2A costs us $30,000, we need 4.07 additional ADA to pay for it. That would work out to 0.07% improvement in our attendance ratio, so from 95.0% to 95.37. We know that our ADA has gone up more than that since we've been on A-2A, and there's actually a form in attitude, your first interim report, because we've got so many questions about enrollment attendance, following Form A, we did some comparisons, because the SACS reports, and we'll talk more about that, use so many different numbers.
What page are you?
It's page 48.
Page 48.
So, we know that our ADA to enrollment ratio was 95.0% in 2011, 12, was 95.6% in 2013, 14, so certainly, it went up more than enough to cover the cost of A-2A. And again, we can't say that's the only other thing. Illness, absences due to illness vary widely from year to year. This year, we'll be curious to see, because supposedly, the flu vaccine is less affected this year, because it's a different strain of what the flu is.
I hear Thursday floods.
Yes, well...
Actually, if there are catastrophic events, we can petition the state for those days, and say, hey, that's an abnormal day, we want to average the day before and the day after. The state does allow districts to do that.
Yeah, it's been done in recent years apart, actually, for several wild parts, and in this county, it's been done for floods. I don't know, I'm trying to remember why I did it. I did, you can actually, there isn't even, is even an exemption for severe illness outbreaks, but it's, you have to lose a lot of attendance before you can, yes, so we'll hope, we'll hope I don't have to lose that for how to do this.
Yes.
But anyway, so I thought it was good to know that the program does seem to be doing to more than pay for itself.
Anna, one more question. On the kid report cards, it says, if they've missed days, if a parent does not agree with those days that they've missed, should we be telling them, call the attendance office and get that corrected? Because we need to...
Yeah, the answer to that would be yes, we'd like all our record-keeping to be accurate, but mistakes certainly can happen, and so if they, the rule is, well, it's 30 minutes, but it's generally, once a student's been counted as present at school, or present at a school board meeting, and they have a lot of work to get done, they say, hey, I'm here, and have a great night. You know, once they're counted here, they're here, you know, so if they're kind of feeling sick by the second period, and dad comes to pick them up, takes them home, they're counted for here. But certainly, some, they should be counted.
And this is what we mean, middle and high schools are the same way. Yeah, I know.
Yes, we take care of the attendance.
Any part of the day, if they're there for any part of the day, they're counted as present for that day. I believe if one searches deep into the ed code, it's 30 minutes, but there's not necessarily a practical way to keep track, you know, if a kid gets sick or...
And I'm certainly aware of district setting, come to the office and get your homework and go home. I heard that said.
Perhaps it's not school, we know if kids are sick, they call us and say, oh.
Yes, preferably not.
I'm just thinking.
But if they say, yeah.
Right. Well, I know, last year, for my daughter, it kept showing days absent, and when I went to the office, they're like, we're showing no days absent, so they should talk with the office, because it wasn't converting correctly to the report card.
Okay, well, that's what I was wondering, because I know in mine, my son hasn't missed any days, but there was a day on there, so.
That's a day we want.
That's a day we wanted, so.
We'll see that out.
Right, check.
Yeah, we'll check that out.
Okay.
Item five, the aforementioned consultant and vendor agreements. We don't have an update on that this month, I anticipate a pretty big update in January. We're going to add some more information to that report for comparison's sake, but I would, you know, you all have the report, you have the list, if there's any questions that you have, if there's a particular contract you want to know more about at a board meeting, please let us know. If there's something you want to revisit, if there's something you think you might feel more cost-effective, that's the fact we love to have. So, anticipate in January, we'll have a revised report for you with more information. Measure D is in your packet, you'll see on page 42 and 43, an updating on our measure D accounting.
It's not terribly different than what we presented to the board last time, except we are revising this year's budget as we go, as we do all of our budgets, so I think the big increase in the last column, the fourth line down, instructional materials district-wide, including Common Core support, we've allocated additional funds there, we've spent, of the 227, we've probably spent about $170,000 so far, and, and we're always trying to, and again, remembering that we've collected, we received zero of the measure D funds so far this year. Property taxes will post soon.
December 9th. Pay your taxes tomorrow.
We see some of the security property taxes actually posted today, so that's good news, but we'll get a little more than half sometime between now and December 20th, but we have gone ahead and spent the money, because we know it's coming. And then, we have to balance that against our need to retain some funds for materials we need to purchase this summer to get ready for next year. And of course, there's still uncertainty about, will we or won't we get money from the state? More money for Common Core? We're hearing maybe. Overwhelming maybe.
So, the, you know, it's interesting, and I think it needs to be pointed out, people need to see things over and over and over again. Far and away, over the last three years, which bear in mind, there's only two years left, unless we look at a renewal, the costs are going to pay for people, personnel, and for debt earlier, and that's important, because that's, you know, that's what we need, professionals working with our students. So, if you look at the smaller class sizes for 14, 15, that's 760,975. If you look at the library teachers, which we're very proud of the fact that we have that going on, and there's a lot of research that shows that the strength of the school library very much correlates to the achievement of the school, another $200,000 there, and then the computer labs, personnel to keep those open, so that's another $53,000, so, you know, simple math, that's about a million dollars just between those three categories. And we think that it's money well-spent, it was part of what generated a lot of changes in the district, of getting things going in a different direction, and those are the people that we would not have if we did not have many, a lot of people.
But we see, I mean, what's the timeframe for the Brookfield property to parcel out and be approved by the county or by the city? I mean, when can we expect that that's going to generate revenue? If the reins there obviously can't put out property lines.
Well, most likely, either be late in this fiscal year, or, and then some over the summer. They're certainly not going to pay more than they need to for what they're immediately building.
I mean, they're looking to have some amount.
Well, they're, yeah, so they would be responsible for the parcel tax until they sell the home.
Correct.
I'm not sure how the county, you know, because when you buy mid-year, you get a supplemental, so I'm not sure how the county treats that, might be something we should...
I mean, then, once the...
They may not go on the rolls until next year.
Yeah, I, there's a possibility.
It may not be till December.
With the actual base property tax, they're going to account for that, somebody's going to pay it. It's possible with the add-on parcel tax, that it may not show up until the next year.
Well, yeah, we don't add to the roll during the year, so the roll is prepared, we give our list of here's our...
Right, that's why I'm saying, I'm saying, it's quite possible that once you go past a certain date, and that doesn't appear until the following tax year.
So, if the...
Right, I was really thinking about developing.
Yeah, yeah.
If the property lines aren't generated, you know, designate parcels for that, for parts of that property.
Right, there's probably just a few big, really big parcels.
Right, there's probably one or two that we're generating little amount, you know, but...
Yeah, but pretty soon, they're going to have to parcel out phase one, which is 399 parcels as of next week.
Okay.
January, if it stops raining.
Yeah.
I was going to say parcel.
But I'm guessing that from a parcel tax point of view, that may not appear until 56.
I understand.
From a development fee point of view, those dollars will come in, and from a property tax, that's going to give them by half.
Okay.
And so, how many homes are we talking about? Are we talking 400? Are we talking for the first day?
Phase one.
Pardon?
Phase one is 399.
Okay, so 400 for 36,000. I mean, so that's, I guess my question is, you know, same, Mark here, you're a little bit less this year in budget, 2,155 versus 2,1232.
Well, I don't want to budget money we don't get, I, some, not everyone pays the property taxes, some people are delinquent. If you look at, last year, we received money for the prior year, so about, almost $8,000. So, you know, it's easy to spend more money, it's...
I understand that, I was just wondering, do you see...
Well, we're always budget dropping here.
Okay, hopefully, we'll see a trend with the economy going better, fewer foreclosures, more homes, you know.
The total amount that went on the tax roll this year was 1,242. We've had some senior exemptions come in since then, and some refunds, but, so that would be if everyone paid.
I'm still paying, I didn't pass a senior exemption.
Good, thank you, thank you.
I didn't think it would be funded.
But it is the top, after all, you're still working, you probably...
We're just run below the exemptions that we initially projected, which I think is pretty good, I think it relates to community wanting to invest in schools, I think it relates to the amount of keeping it or losing the whole model. But anybody, I mean, what CBO Barron mentioned, anybody that's come in even after the fact, which not every district does, we said, okay, we'll refund you 100. That one, I encourage you. On page 43, you see a list of purchases, so everything you see here, you'll hear when we get the board services item regarding the interim report from the committee, but they get to see all of this every time we meet, and we show them actual purchases, so that's what we see on page 43.
So, to be clear, a few things, this is not everything, this is just district money, so it does include the site purchases. There is no effort at the district level to spread this evenly around among the school sites. So, what happens in the summer, we start out spending restricted lottery funds first, and last year, we had some Common Core money as well, and then, we say, okay, that's pretty much all of it, and so that's where we first come first serve. We don't say, so much for Rancho, and so much for Tech Middle, and so much for everything, we don't, because a lot of materials, we order on a combined basis anyway, because all the fifth graders are going to need the same thing, whatever school they're at. So, then, basically, when we're doing our ordering, and I say, okay, that's all lottery, I'm comfortable spending until I know for sure how much we're going to get, then we switch to measure D. So, there may be some sites not on the list, and some that look like they got a disproportionate amount, and it's because you're not seeing what was spent in lottery, and of course, the sites don't all have the same needs every year either. And this year, with moving towards Common Core and trying to increase rigor, there's a lot to try and get everyone doing the same novel at the same time at the secondary level, and that's required a significant investment. But again, you know, we buy the permanent, perma-bound books, so it's not like they're used once and then they're falling apart, these are books that will be used for years to come. Look at the books, and I'm like, wow, I read that in high school. So, they're our classics, so, but we thought it was helpful for people to see, get a flavor for the kinds of things that were found.
Next item, we have an update on measure D and our bond projects. So, I guess I'll go to the visuals. So yes, I'll go to the visuals. You may recall, we have three sites that we're actively working on, projects at Thomas Page Academy, Rancho Tati High School, and Evergreen Elementary. So we have lots of other projects in mind. Those are the three that we're under contract right now with our architect and with our contractor. We still discuss and strategize for the other schools, but right now, these are the ones we're focusing on. So with Thomas Page Academy, I updated you at the last meeting about issues we ran into with the road. So the road is at this point off the list. You'll see, I sent around a Ritz update, and we've all agreed to take the road out. Along the way, a big change to the project was instead of just the north or the south classroom building, we're adding the north classroom building. This site, like many of our sites, has a lot of aging portals. And really, the, the idea of putting this building in, we need more capacity there starting next year. And investing a single dollar in more aging portals, there didn't make sense. So there's, there's portals here right now that could go away. These portals here are very bad shape. So this is a six-classroom additional modular building, leveraging off of the one that we were already working with the modular manufacturer, the contractor, and the architect to do. So really, this became an economies of scale. If we're gonna do the work at Thomas Page, let's figure out all the work that needs to be done at Thomas Page when the contractor is there to mobilize and get it all done. So... So the south building is a bigger building. The south building is designed to have six classrooms to support the upper grades with what we're calling a flex room. And the flex room will have a divider so that this room can be opened up, which should house perhaps, you know, many assembly or two classes getting together. But the wall will be audible very easily, open and closed, and acoustically divide the two rooms. We did look at buildings like this that had all glass walls, but talking to the site principal, we've kind of agreed that that might be, in this environment, kind of distracting. There would be glass wall between the flex room and whatever teacher was in this room. And then this has a full module for storage, staff, and student bathrooms. So that's the south building. The north building is very similar. I didn't mention, I have several times, we're focused on having these large interior hallways, designed as learning places. So we would have furniture out there, small groups of students. All of the classrooms have both exterior and interior windows, so teachers would be able to observe what's going on in the hallway, keep track, you know, if they send anything out there. Slight change, we didn't mention last time, we designed that in. There'll be a staff, bathrooms in this building. This particular building is the farthest away from, will become the farthest away from the office in the near staff bathrooms. But there, as you recall, student bathrooms, plus five, so we didn't add any student bathrooms. In order to decide, we had to change in the location and work with the modular manufacturer. So there'll be a little difference between the size of the classroom on the south side of the hallway and the size of the classroom on the north side of the hallway. But again, then you can see the elevations and what they'll look like from the exterior. Definitely continuing to have the size as much natural lighting as possible. So that's Thomas Page Academy. And then-
And the plans, we'll go to DSA next week.
The timeline, as you see on your update, hasn't changed. We still are hoping to have this in place for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year. We'll have to get a lot of work done this summer, but we won't get it all done. So we have a staging meeting with the principal, I believe sometime this week.
Right.
And looking at, okay, where can we move students and where will it be the least disruptive to move students? You know, disrupting the end of this year after testing and, you know, rolling the dice and maybe disrupting the beginning of the next year. I think our default would be to disrupt the end of this year so that we have a new facility in place for the following year. When we've done research, we went, announced a couple of times, to Bennett Valley and Yehuba. When it was redone, they made the decision to disrupt the sector, the new school year. So beginning of the school year, they had a number of teachers that were doubled up in anticipation of the new classroom opening. So those are some decisions that, you know, we would just wanna work with the principal and the teachers at that site. Unfortunately, there's going to be disruptions, so what's the best way to handle it? Where can we put kids and how can we get through it? So we spent a lot of time talking about Rancho Tati High School. We're getting closer to having, we've talked through a number of options, the exterior modernization. There were some choices that we made. This is kind of starting to be the overall look. You'll recall from last time, there's a level one treatment, a level two treatment, and a level three treatment. Try to show the different treatments and how much work needs to be done in the different buildings around the campus. We are planning, I think it's the, I don't, there's a building that, that really fits all three levels towards the front of the campus, so we're hoping to put some mock-up products there for you to go and take a look at over winter break. And it might be weather dependent as well, and try to get things ordered. Though there will be a lot of this product, so this is a siding product that we can put on-
It's gonna sound smaller.
Well, it's more lighted, but it's, yeah. So this will become a district-wide standard product that we use. We've gotten seen in a number of districts. We're still looking at getting the right custom color for it in some schools. So there'll be elements of this built into the Thomas Page modulars. It's a pretty durable product. So you wanna take a look at that? You'd have really, really committed to wanting to test this.
We are checking to be sure there will be graffiti resistant. Is that what you mean by that?
The other thing we're looking at, not just Rancho Tati, but looking at Rancho Tati and looking at, I love Thomas Page. And looking at, at Thomas Page, that there is a consistent approach to what our buildings will look like. Very similar to what we talked about, the branding and other areas of the district. So we'll have a base color palette, and then some, maybe one or more customizing colors for each campus. But the overall look, you would see it'd be consistent as we do projects throughout the course. And really using this as our template and our starting point. So we're looking forward to seeing if we can get a good mock-up for people to look like. So then, that would extend over to the largest new building that we're still in the designing phase. You'll see on that list, a couple of things are gonna be coming up. Programming meeting, and that's where we meet with the principal and some staff members, who will be, you know, giving us insight, you know. So I wanna show you another perspective of the building and the potential classroom arrangements in it. You know, so if we have a performing arts classroom, we wanna talk to performing arts teacher. If we have, you know, obviously a lot of athletic facilities, we're talking with the AD. Make sure that we program into it all of the things that we need. But again, looking at the overall concept of what the exterior would look like would match what we do around the rest of the campus. Move these around. So then, we're looking at, these are still conceptual, still at the phase where we can do a phase around. So don't be here thinking, oh, it's this, there's actually two options I'm gonna show. But it shows the kind of things that we're building in. And it also shows you the size. Over here is where the football field is. So this entire area of this building is gonna take up a huge chunk of this entire area. And this is where some of the older portals are right here. I think some old tennis courts are right here. Talked about it last time, it's really gonna impact this CTE area. And so we really need to look at, you know, the CTE area and make sure that that fits our overall vision for the school, because a lot of students are gonna be going there and seeing it. Inside of the building, the main elements, the theater. So this'll be, right now, it's programmed at about a two-hundred-seat theater with a single level. We looked at different approaches. A full stage, a big stage. And the stage will have an opable wall again, so that we can present to an audience of two-hundred or we can present to potentially an audience of, say, three-thousand, depending on how many people around here. It's a two-story building, so you see a lower hallway, and then part of the building is raised. We have locker rooms that are required to have a visitor's team room, which we've seen it, it's pretty advantageous when we have visiting programs. Currently a PE classroom. And then these are really, they say dance and PE fitness now, but these could be tweaked around. One idea would be maybe move the weight room and repurpose what we've had a weight room. And then a band room, and we've looked at some of the state-of-the-art band rooms from, at, at other campuses. And so pretty excited to have something along those lines. So that's, that would be one approach. Another approach, same elements, just a different arrangement of how things would be put into the building and how it would be twisted inside. So this, this would be six classrooms. This would be six classrooms on top of here, so there would be, from this level, you could look out over to court and, and see what was ever, what was going on below. Pretty dramatic visual element. So this is, this would increase the classroom capacity we have on the campus. So that's, again, a question to work with the staff of, okay, what, what type of classrooms would we want? Because if, let's say, we wanted to put science classrooms here, well, the standard for a science classroom now is more like a science that flex, so it would be six. Different classrooms now have different needs. So we'll have that programming meeting, and then as we'll get further along in the process, we'll go to the site in January and give everybody a look of what is going on and guiding it. Don't have any updates at this point on Evergreen. We're still working with the architect and the contractor, looking at what we learned in writing our master plan, what we've learned since then, going to the site, you know, specifically with the architect and the contractor together, with our director of facilities, maintenance, grounds, operations, and technology. There's a base set of things that we know we want to do there, but we're not at the point where we're ready to start designing and being drawn. Modernization elements that I've been pointing out to people that will be a lot of dollars that people won't necessarily see or understand, because it's a lot of ADA work. Once we start going in there, modernizing, we have to have it fully ADA compliant, every building that we go into. But, you know, there'll be, you know, we're taking out the movable wall, so there's better physical separation between the classrooms, but keeping the path of travel. So the doors and a lot of cabinetry, we're bringing in the natural lighting. We're still trying to figure out the best way to do that with windows and solar tubes. Maintenance work, like making sure the books and everything, building oval ropes and shade, all the exterior, same kind of treatment that we would be doing at Thomas Page and Rancho Tati. Shade, shade's another issue that keeps coming up. Finding the most cost-effective, DSA-compliant way to bring shade to campuses, so that's being taken into account. The playground, I didn't mention it, Thomas Page, we talked about that before. Let's get all the playgrounds. There'll be a K playground at Evergreen. And then probably the biggest debate is what to do with the end, because there's, spending some time in there with the contractor, together with the architect. You know, we, for instance, we thought, well, we'll just, we'll at least expand the kitchen. You know, that would make sense, because it's a plus. If you, then you have a great size for the kitchen. But then you start getting into the hundred, two-hundred thousand dollar mark, and you think, well, we're spending a lot of money-
For the size of that camp.
Expanding a kitchen that's in a building that really can never be truly assumed like you. So where we have to do that all then.
So when you go to Thomas Page, when you put these buildings in, is it from a timing perspective? Or are you also doing the other stuff that needs to be done? So the cylinders on the roofs, those go next summer as well? Is that the, the thought process?
Yes, the, the other, the other elements of the work to be done there are pretty easily accomplished in summer, it's just the modular. The biggest problem is there are kids in classrooms there. So we have to figure out a place to move them for some period of time while we put in the new buildings. But the exterior work, the work in the K-one building and the library, which will be also modernized, that, that's, should be easily accomplished.
Okay. So the goal is to basically finish Thomas Page next year.
The, the rap is that, say, our campus is-
A completed campus, so that way there, everyone can look at, see what this looks like, kinda like the model's home. It's like, okay, now we know the next campus, we're gonna be doing the same type of thing. Instead of doing piecemeal work all over the place where people aren't gonna really see a finished product for a very, very long time. Finish one, go on, finish the next one, go on, finish the next one.
We need more monoliths.
So what, what campus looks like Evergreen? Is there's not-
No, it's, well, it's-
Oh, it's Crane that looks like? Okay, oh, that's right.
We're gonna have a much better understanding of what the exterior work will really cost for square foot. We're gonna have a much better understanding of what the modular, you know. We have a lot of, you know, I was at Monovista, I'm losing track, I guess it was today, maybe it was yesterday. You know, there are a lot of aging portals yesterday at Monovista. And so getting, you know, if we, if we wanna take portals out and put modular in, what's that gonna cost? So we kinda are using, you know, we know we, we need to get the work done at Rancho, and that's a big ticket item, and then using some of the work we're doing there. So we're gonna do a Thomas Page, the guide, okay. How much more do we have room left in our, how much room do we have left in the lock program? And then we'll assess.
Got you. Thanks.
And then finally, as always, we have enrollment information in our monthly enrollment report. We did a pretty thorough look at that last lunch, but there's a few questions that haven't answered. It's not happening yet.
As well, B, Measure D candidate.
I wanna thank committee member Schubert for being here tonight and hanging out. Hopefully we were entertaining, but, you know.
Esteemed board, in keeping with its bylaws, the Measure D Citizens Oversight Committee met four times during the calendar year 2014. At its meetings, the following items were discussed and action taken as needed. Election of the chair and clerk, review of the bylaws and election documents, review of revenue projections and receipts, review of the district's spending plans for 2012, thirteen, twenty-four, thirteen, fourteen, and 2014, fifteen, review of site spending plans for 2012 and 2013, and 2013, 2014, and establishment of meeting dates. The committee, due to loss of members, did not have a quorum to certify the report, but the report is submitted, and the committee affirms that the Measure D spending plans were in accordance with the resolution and election.
I wanna thank Karen. She's been a great committee member and was a clerk. Unfortunately, as she mentioned, we lost our quorum due to some people moving away and, and taking work apart from the district, but with some action later on the agenda, we'll be refilling, you know.
Can I get a motion to approve Measure D discusses, actually, approval to?
Receive the report.
Yeah, receive the report.
I move we receive the Measure D annual report for 2014.
Okay, second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion through. I think twelve D, approval, actually, well, C, approval Measure D Citizens Oversight Committee membership.
As you can see, we have three members that would be continuing. You'll see from our resolution, the different categories that we tried to fill. And then we have proposed for you tonight, adding four members that would fit into the categories that you'll see- that you'll see listed. Um, and I believe we received just today, we, the cutoff to make this list was last Wednesday. We've never turned anybody down. So if somebody really wants to be on the committee and they'll commit to attending, we don't want somebody to just say, ah, I'm going to check it out, come once. Because there's a certain amount of education that we want in informed participation. So, um, certainly recommend that you see the four listed for you today. And then if we have some more to add in January beyond, we'll bring more back to you.
Can I get a motion to approve the Measure D Citizens Oversight Committee membership?
I move we approve the Measure D Citizens Oversight Committee membership.
Can I get a second?
All seats in that?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Welcome aboard.
12D approval of Citizens Bond Oversight Committee membership.
Originally, we hoped to have one oversight committee, but steps toward it, that didn't work out. So what we did is encourages anyone eligible from the Measure D committee that would like to serve on the bond oversight committee, we encourage them to apply. Um, so we'll have some carryover. We'll try to arrange the meetings back, well, we're not trying, we're willing to arrange the meetings so that they occur back-to-back, uh, so people don't have to give up more than one evening. Uh, we don't have all of the categories filled yet and, um, so we're still excited to recruit membership if, you know, anyone that's interested. So, um, but we'd like to see the six that you see before you tonight.
Can I get a motion to approve the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee membership?
I move we approve the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee membership.
Can I get a second?
All seats in that?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Heading 12E, approval of the first interim report, heads of October 31st, 2014.
We're here, we took a five-minute break.
Sure.
The additional people. We simply didn't have the information at budget at any point, say, well, exactly how many people are they? Where are they going to place some salary schedule? So for both certified and classified, there's an increase. If you go further down the page, the service and operating expenditures line, the decrease that is there, the big decrease in it was actually more is a reduction in what we'll be paying SCO because there's fewer students who pay on a per-student basis. Moving down the page, we have more employees, so we are paying health insurance for more people. We had the actual rates at the time when we adopted the budget, so that's not a difference. Retirees, we always do our best to estimate how many more retirees we'll have over the summer, but we do get some retirements during the summer, and we're not able to include those people in the budget because we don't know about them. So that's the reason you see an increase in retiring health benefit costs. Other employee benefits, and that's everything else. It's STIRS, it's PERS, it's workers' comp, it's unemployment, it's FICA and Medicare for all the employees. That went up only $30,000. The main reason for that is that we built our budget on the STIRS rate going up to nine and a half percent. The final state budget only gave us half the increase. So that savings offset the driven costs for the additional employees. So that's why it's only a $30,000 increase. Books and supplies, we have a big increase there. That is normal. We have that every year, and that is because we budget carryover. When we prepare our adopted budget, we haven't closed the books for the prior year. We don't know what the carryovers will be. So we can't budget it because we don't know. When we get into the year, the books are closed, and we finish our audited actuals, then we rebudget those carryover sums. In addition, there are some specific funds, particularly in Measure D, that we've allocated for curriculum. We're at adoption. We were leaving an N E fund balance because we were trying to figure out, well, how much can come from Common Core? How much can come from lottery? Now we know, here's our need. And we're trying to carefully pinch our pennies and say, make sure we've got enough for next year. We know we have students who need materials now. Other is a bunch of different things. It's everything from what we pay West County Transportation for people transportation to a little bit of capital expenditures, indirect costs we receive back from other funds. And there's also the transfer from Fund 40, our special reserve fund that we put in our routine restricted maintenance account. So all of those things roll up into other. On a net basis, a total basis, at adopted budget, we were projecting $19,000 increase in N E fund balance. At First Interim, we're projecting a $71,000 decrease. For a $52 million budget, we would consider that essentially a breakeven. Part of why we knew we were okay having a slight deficit is that our final beginning fund balance is higher, high, $330,000 than we projected when we built the budget. So we're still projecting an N E fund balance of $243,000 more than at adoption. So that's good. That's the direction we want to go in.
So, yeah, I don't want to jump in now, but if you look at page nine on our budget mature that you gave us, the original budget, which I see the 59095, then you have board-approved operating at 53.
So board-approved is simply what was in our system as of October 31st. So the numbers that we're looking at here for First Interim are the projected year totals.
Okay, and the original budget is, was that back in July?
That was what you adopted in June.
In June, okay. So June, the operating approved budget is October 31st?
Correct.
Okay. Because, you know, looking at this, I mean, depending on which comparison you look at, on page nine, it shows a revenue going down, 910,000. But, you know, which should we be comparing? Should we be looking at this?
The original, really the meaningful thing is the projected year totals. That column is our best forecast of what we think will happen for the rest of the year based on what we know today.
Okay, and that's 910,000 less than what we thought on October 31st, 753090, correct?
Correct. So when we're looking at our revenue, we're constantly updating it as we get new notices from the state of what our federal revenue will be. We update our projections of enrollment, our projections of ADA. And later in your package, you have the whole LCFF calculator that estimates the revenue.
Right. So I'm confused. That shows going up 2 million?
So it's comparing projected year totals to the original budget.
Okay.
I have no control over the software, so I can't make it compare column D to column A. The state software compares column D to column C. I just don't think that's all that means. Because what has happened, certainly under the local control funding formula, even more than under the old revenue limit, you get as many adjustments as in as you can by October 31st, but you're never done. We typically don't even have the guidance from the county office of what they think we should assume or what we should base our projections on until after October 31st. Or maybe we got it a week before.
This would be similar to the issue that came up in 1314 because the ending period for second interim report is January 31st, and they wanted to change our certification based upon events and changes that came well after. Okay, fine, but we can't account for it because the cutoff is January 31st.
Well, in that case, it was even worse because we didn't get the information after the report was done, yes. And that, I am concerned that that will be an issue again this year. And in fact, we would like to request the superintendent's counsel to raise that with the cell phone.
So back to page nine, then if you're saying the projected year totals are the crucial numbers, correct?
Correct.
So on page nine, it shows total revenues projected at 52,180,000, correct?
Correct.
And then it shows expenditures at 52,813, which is a $600,000 bonus spending.
Right, and then below that, the inter-fund transfers in of $562,000 are also included in the other. So you have to turn the page if you want to see the net increase or decrease in N E fund balance.
Right, and I said to turn the page.
And that's the $71,000, which matches the slide. So this is positive, but it's not have a party positive. It won't. It's, a year ago, we were like, oh, thank goodness Prop 3 passed. We don't have to put in the cut that we couldn't put in our budget because it would have threatened the district solvency. So it's tempered good news, but it's cautious. Any more questions on the summary?
And your transfer in of the 562, I'm trying to remember, what is that?
That is, we get redevelopment money from both the City of Cotati and the City of Roanoke Park.
Still.
It's put into Fund, well, for 20 more years or so. Because those are obligations of the successor agencies, and they have been approved by the State Controller's Office because they were contractual. So we get money, that money is put into Fund 40 because it is intended to be used for facilities. And Fund 40 makes a transfer to the routine restricted maintenance account and the general fund, part of how we're paying to maintain the district's facilities. So it pays for everything from the maintenance specialists to the maintenance vehicles, to the supplies they use to fix the roofs and fix the restrooms and all of those kinds of things. So not custodial, but building, maintenance, routine repairs. Not the major things, not a roof because we simply don't have enough money in that account. One of the things, under the flexibility provisions of the State Budget Act, we used to have to put 3% of our total expenditures towards routine restricted maintenance because we had gotten state facilities money. When the crisis hit, they said, oh, districts can't do that. We'll give them flexibility. And originally, you only had to put 1% in, and they said, well, as long as you're meeting the Williams requirements that can show that your facilities are clean and safe, we don't care how much you put in. So our district, we need about 2% to actually run our eighth maintenance program at a barebones level, remembering that we laid off some of our maintenance staff and made other reductions. For this year, we're not putting quite the full 2% in, mostly because the budget doesn't really have room. But we're running, we're keeping our facility safe, but we're, Josh is working very hard with his staff to really prioritize the things we're going to do. Next year, that flexibility ends, and so we have to return to the 3% contribution to the routine restricted maintenance fund.
Well, as of today.
I haven't heard anyone talk about there being any flexibility on that. You can only run lean for so long, and then all of a sudden, there's stuff you should have been doing that you haven't really been doing, and you end up paying more later. So I actually think we've gone long enough. As part of that 3%, my recommendation to the board will be that we take one and a half percent and put that into deferred maintenance fund, which is what we used to do back before flexibility. We put part of our money in, and states put part of their money in. My current expectation is that we can't do the full half percent. In 1516, we've got a lot of accumulated needs. Talked at length about our need to address the vehicle fleet. But over time, we need to start putting money into deferred maintenance fund. You know, it's fine to say that right now, well, we've got the bond to replace a roof. When we finish our bond projects, we'll still have plenty of older buildings that will need roofs, or will have, you know, pipes that will develop gas leaks, all of those kinds of maintenance things. Without putting money aside, we won't have a plan. So that will be something that we will be, we are planning on in our multi-year, we'll be planning on in next year's budget. And I wish we could do it all. It used to be that we'd put in about 250,000, the state would put in about 250,000, and you would end up sitting with a pot of money that you knew you would be able to deal with your roofs and painting and other kinds of maintenance projects. It's going to, that money we had in Fund 14 got us through the first few years of the fiscal crisis. So it's something you really need to have. It's just, you know, it's just, at home, you can't, you know you're going to have to replace the roof someday, the harbor hold boat that needs cleaning, it's all that stuff. So any other questions about the summary? I guess I can say the 562,000 was increased, the contribution from Fund 40. Basically, I said, okay, I need to find every dime I can to reduce what the unrestricted general fund has to put in. So we never know exactly how much we're going to get. Cotati, we usually get the check in January, so we know sooner, but that's a smaller check of $42,000. The big chunk is through Roanoke Park. That actually comes to the county treasurer in late June. It's more than $400,000. So we had accumulated, you know, $5,000 or $10,000 a year. This year, I said, we're cleaning it all out because we've got to reduce the pressure on the general fund. So next year, when we get to the multi-year, we'll be back to what's in the adopted budget, the 512,000. Certainly, if more money comes in, we'll use it. There's not really a reason to have it sit in Fund 40 when you could use it to take your heart properly. Any other questions? So talking about enrollment, enrollment, you know, again, people are always amazed. How come you don't know how many kids you have? Well, it's just very complicated. So we're still working on getting our Cbeds numbers nailed down. Cbeds count day was October 1st this year. You can see that the way our enrollment is constituted has changed because we used to have roughly 55 more students in county office programs than we do now. But you can see, and the number keeps moving. So we built First Interim on total enrollment at 5918. I got an update of the number this morning. It looks more like 5909. We have till December 19th to get our numbers certified, and most districts are working all the way up to the end because you submit early, and another district says, wait, you're reporting a kid we think we have. Then you have to roll back and resubmit. So you really want to clean your data as much as you can. In addition, enrollment is only one part because part of the Cbeds reporting process is also our free and reduced counts, our foster children, our homeless children, and lots of other data that goes into the LCFF and also feeds into other data and reports the state does. So we'll meet the deadline to certify our data by the summer 19th. There is an amendment window till the end of February because, again, the state knows there's a lot of detailed work here, and anomalies do crop up after the fact. So you're actually allowed to have anomalies in your data of not more than 2%, I believe, of your students, and you have to have no fatal errors. So as of today, we don't have any fatal errors.
You're using the word fatal error.
We don't have fatal errors.
We definitely are.
We try not to use fatal errors.
We're against fatal errors in our count that is reported.
Well, I have to say, the CDE must really like that word fatal error because the software we do our financial reporting in, we have to do technical review checks. And there are warnings, and then there are fatal errors. And you cannot upload your file with a fatal error. So fatal. And don't forget.
As opposed to a futile error.
Many futile errors. So, you know, I think this shows our enrollment continues to move. We work really hard to clean up the data, but we're still ahead. And that's the other thing, you know, we still have more students than we did a year ago. So any questions on enrollment? You know, we will bring back, I think we can plan to bring back our real Cbeds in January. I don't know exactly when the state's going to certify. I could not find, but they commit to themselves. However, I do know it'll be sometime in February whether or not they post it because during February, they're going to do our P1 calculations using our first attendance period, the P1 period. So we have to report P1 to SCO in January, and then they report it to the state. The state will do their calculation. So they'll have the official Cbeds numbers they publish sometime in February. All right, we talked about this before, but LCFF is so new, I still think it's worth revisiting. So how do we get our money now? It's not $1 amount per student. The funding varies by grade span. The theory being that it costs less to educate K3 students than it does to educate 46, and so on. High school students are the most expensive. Materials are the most expensive. Department of Technology instruction is more expensive. So last year's base grant gets adjusted by the cost of living adjustment, the COLA. The COLA is just a mathematic calculation done by the Department of Finance. It was 0.85% for 1314. So it leads to small adjustments to those base grants, and that gives you the base grant for 1415. Then we take that base grant and we adjust it. K3 gets the 10.4% class size reduction increment, which was meant to help give money to lower class size, even though it's not enough to lower it to what they want you to lower it to. And then at the 912 level, there's a 2.6% increment for, that's meant to support career tactical education. Both of those are unrestricted dollars, and you can set them up whatever you want as long as you meet the other requirements. So then that gives us the adjusted base grade span amounts. And you can see, it's quite a variation, you know. It's nearly $1,000 between K3 and 912. Again, this is all about the target. That's not what we really get per student.
Very excited. We don't have.
Yeah, I would be very excited if that was our funding this year. Everyone would be excited. Then we have the add-ons, the supplemental and concentration grant add-ons. And that's based on what's called your unduplicated count or your eligible students. So it's the percent of total enrollment that is either English learner, free and reduced, or foster youth students count at least once, no matter how many categories they qualify in. So our estimate of unduplicated count has grown since budget adoption. So thank you, Galene, that effort to get more free and reduced forms filled out, and all of the school sites that contributed. We actually did a little contest when the students had paid up. We got movement on our number, and that more than paid for itself. Now, this number doesn't generate as much as you might think. You think, oh, 4% increase, that's going to be a lot of money. Well, no, because the supplemental grant is only 20% of the base. So it's 20% of the 7741 times the 48.24%. So a 1% increase across the board gives us like $80,000. So it's not nothing, but it's not a million, which that would be exciting. But it's better than a decrease, and more is better. It is unlikely that our district will ever get to the 55% concentration count level. In particular, the new housing may well reduce our duplicated count because people have qualified for loans to buy new house, so they're probably not free and reduced. So just something to, you know, bear in mind. That percentage is actually ultimately going to be a three-year rolling average. We're in year two, and they recognized that districts were struggling to try and make sure they were certifying everyone that they could last year. So if this year's number is higher than last year's, you got to use this year's, and the same will be true next year. If you'll, if there's a one low year, they'll throw that out. It'll be a two-year weighted average. And then after that, it will be the three-year rolling average, so thinking being that you know how to do it now. So any questions about that calculation? You have in your packet in section six, the LCFF calculator with the detailed calculations, all the data fields that are input. I must commend our budget director, Wendy Wood, for doing this calculator. Again, this FICMAT, the Fiscal Crisis and Management Advisory Team, is actually the entity that maintains the calculator. It is not part of the SAC software, and it's not being done by the CDE. So FICMAT consults with people from the Department of Education, the Department of Finance, people who work at school services, and any other experts they could think of to try and say, are we doing the calculation the way it is? Does it going to match what the CDE is really going to do when they calculate your revenue? So it's a little different every time. There's a lot of detail. Because saying we're funded on those categories, it's like, well, except non-public school students are funded on annual ADA still because you always have been. And then you have to adjust for district students who leave and go to a charter school within the district. There's a minus for that. So there's a number of adjustments. We are still funded on the greater of current or prior year ADA. So if you're in declining enrollment, you get that soft landing. We, for the first time since I've been here, in all three years, we've funded on current year ADA because we've got growth. That's pretty exciting, things that we're not having to think about that declining enrollment adjustment. So there's a lot in here. I'm not going to go through it. It's, the good thing is that FICMAT made the calculator, so we all have a way to try and come up with our estimates that will be close to what our real funding is going to be. All right, so multi-year projections. And I think now is perhaps the time to hand out the supplement. So we worked really hard on the first interim, and then you're going through it, preparing the slide, and you say, oops. So one of the things we discovered is that when FICMAT released the new version of the calculator in November, they updated the COLA percentages. I'm sure I read that somewhere, but I forgot. So in the first interim narrative, if you look at page 91, it says we use the Dartboard. That's not true. The Dartboard COLA is a little bit different than what's in the calculator. So if you look at the LCFF calculator, it has COLAs in it as well. But I just wanted to point that out. That's a mistake. We want to be transparent. So the calculator, the calculator got their percentages. And again, it's just an estimate at this point in time of what the cost of living adjustment will be. And it's a market basket of goods and services. It's a statutory calculation. The Department of Finance prepares a calculation, though, so their estimate is better than the estimate school services got in July. So that's why we used what was in the calculator there. So that's the first thing on your supplement. So the statutory COLA, again, gets applied to those prior year base grants to figure out what's the base grant for this year as part of calculating your targeted revenue. Then we take the targeted revenue and say, okay, what's the difference between the target and what you got last year? And that's the gap. The next section of the chart shows the gap funding percentage. The gap is different for every district in the state, but that percentage is what part of your gap you're getting funding for. And these estimates vary widely, as you can see. So everybody agrees on 1415 because that's announced, and it's a known number, 29.56%. For 15, oh, there's a typo, 1516, we have a range of school services being super conservative, saying 7.9%. The Department of Finance is 20.68%. So we, as a district, chose to be middle of the road. If we were sitting on, you know, 10% reserves, we could afford to be optimistic because we'd have a cushion if we were wrong. But we are not that district, so we're being right in the middle, be conservative, be reasonable. Many districts in the state aren't taking that approach. Certainly, the school services numbers are very pessimistic, and I would say not realistic, and I think they would say not realistic. Right before Thanksgiving, to the California Association of School Business Officials, CASBO for short, Symposium in Newport Beach. And all the names were there. School Services was there. People from the legislative homeless office were there. Two different economists were there. And the consensus was very clear that Californians' revenues are $2 billion ahead of what the budget was built on. That was acknowledged last summer. Many people said that was true. The governor did not want to commit that money to ongoing costs. So this year, we'll be seeing that money in some form or other. It's part of Proposition 98, so it's not like it began to be given to anyone else. It's really a matter of how will it come to schools? Will it be an increase in gap funding? Will it be one-time funding for Common Core? One-time funding for STIRS? Pay down the mandated cost backlog? One of the things that's in the Budget Act is that part of it will be used to pay off the remaining deferrals. All that's left for this year is a deferral from June to July. If that were to be paid off, that would be a good thing. So we'll see. In any event, 1415's gap funding did increase just slightly from what we used at budget adoption. The final state budget increased it. On the other hand, the later years have decreased significantly since budget adoption. So it's still very confusing. The Department of Finance says, oh, use our, and the governors, they say, use our numbers. You can use, build your projections on these numbers. But then we had a 9% decrease in the projection of the gap for 1516. Well, I can't really plan to spend that money if that much of it might go away. So I guess we're not able to predict our future year funding better than we could under the old model. So the little part of the handout, talking about the gap funding percentages, just, again, this was intended to be included in the narrative that we'll be at next time, to give you a sense of how much difference does it make. If school services is right, in 201516, we lose $700,000 of revenue compared to what's in the multi-year. If the Department of Finance is right, we gain $575,000. So that's a really big swing. That's 1.3 million dollar swing. In 1617, it's compounded. So if school services is right, we lose 1.6 million dollars. If Department of Finance is right, we gain 1.3. So that's a 2.8 million dollar swing in those years. So that makes it really hard to know what can we afford.
This would highlight, you know, from last month's discussion with regards to the county office of education. If one assumes all of the worst things that could come true will come true, things can look catastrophic. But is that a realistic way to approach planning and budgeting? The other thing to keep in mind is, at this point, these are all made up. None of these are real numbers. They're all just guesses plugged in. They're all just guesses plugged in. We haven't had too many disagreements with the county office about current year budgeting a little bit, but it's mainly been the multi-year projections and whether or not one assumes that everything that could go wrong will go wrong is the right.
And you don't do anything about it.
Right, and then, right, because again, these are not, multi-year projections have no bearing on actual revenue and actual expenditures.
Is the county treating each district the same? So if there's, if they're looking at our budget and looking at the potential worst-case scenario, catastrophic, you know, if you go down to Petaluma or up to Windsor or Sebastopol, are they seeing the same treatment by scope?
Yes and no. I pointed it out last month. It was sort of in that meeting, I kind of had my epiphany. The problem that we have, which Ann, CEO Barrett mentioned earlier, is our reserve. You know, with barely being above the 3%, they're going to look at us very differently than a district that's at 10 or 12%.
It's all about.
If we were sitting on 10 or 12% reserve, we would, they.
They would, they barely talked to us. They'd say, yeah, great.
They might look at, you know, at 1516 and say, okay, well, you know, why did you go on this particular slide at 15 at 20.68, want some explanation? They would even look at 1617 and just, you know. So those districts that have low levels of reserves, they're going to focus on pretty close.
So Windsor-Cloverdale look like us, sort of, maybe?
Mm-hmm. Windsor does, definitely. Even less than.
And then, and there's concern in Petaluma that they've been drawing down their reserve levels to city districts, not the other elementarys, whatever.
Right, okay.
So, big difference. And of course, you know, we'll get more information, and we'll keep updating our budget. So, and this is just a different way of looking at it. So that was the differences. Here's in total revenue, what are the differences? So if school services is right, 1516, again, is that $1.2 million gap. Our projection, we're right there in the middle. And again, this is the bulk of our budget, of our $52 million in revenue. $42 million is coming from the local control funding formula. And that is different. That's about $3 million more than under the revenue limit model because so many categorical programs went away. So transparency requirements. The Senate Bill 858 that was passed as one of the trailer bills to the budget created new transparency requirements for school district reserves. The requirement officially begins when we adopt next year's budget, 1516 budget. Of course, I've talked to the board about reserves always because it's what you need to know. So, you know, I'm doing a little more.
This slide would be one we'd love to have a future discussion about because it would mean that we're categorizing reserves beyond the statutory minimum.
Yes.
So this would, is not as important, not to rush you along.
We're going to play the groundwork for the future.
Working to get there with you.
So you have to say, what's your minimum reserve, which is 3% for a district of our size? Again, the amount of reserves is tied to how much your ADA is. Very small districts need a 5% reserve. Elementary unit only needs 1%. And then you have to state the reasons that you've got other components of ending fund balance besides your reserve for economic uncertainty. So if you said, I'm designating a certain amount of money for budget stabilization, or we're setting aside money for future technology purchase, we're going to accumulate that money over three years. That would be an example. And you have to provide this discussion for each year of your budget. So presumably, they need each year of the multi-year. So that's just backdrop. Here is our historical and actual ending fund balance in the general fund going back to '07-'08. If you'll notice, at '07-'08 and '08-'09, it looks like we had lots of reserves, and we spent them quickly. This is a reproduction of the slide from an audited actuals, but it gives the history. Here is now what we're projecting. So the first two rows, 1213 and 1314, those are known. So 1213, we ended with 7.9% reserve. 1314, 4.72%. And here we are now shrinking down. The reserve requirement is tied to your expenditures. So that 3% is not of your revenue. It's of your expenditures and transfers out. So as we get more money and plan to spend more money, our 3% requirement grows. One other thing, the fourth column headed Special Reserve Fund, that is Fund 17, our special reserve for other than capital outlay. We could put other things in Fund 17 if we, for example, were able to say, we're starting, we're going to set aside $100,000 a year for replacing technology. We could also put that in Fund 17. In the history of this district, it's only been used for economic uncertainty reserve. So any questions about this slide? So talking, our required discussion here, currently, we're just over 3% in all years of the multi-year. As a reminder, our board policy that was adopted when GASB, I want to say, '68 came into effect, we, the board adopted a policy calling for 4%. In reality, in order to manage our cap flow, we need a bigger reserve than that. 4% would be, we would all, we would be borrowing, for example, at this time of year while we're waiting for property taxes, again, in March and April when we're waiting for property taxes. So here are some statistics. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends two months of expenditures, which would be about 17% reserve. And there actually are districts who have that. Bond rating agencies compared to the statewide average, which was 15% for unified districts. Again, the county office would not be worried about this at all. There are other multi-year needs we are going to have to address. Constructional materials. Yes, we've bought some, but we've had years of buying minimal amounts of instructional materials. There are great needs in our classrooms. Deferred maintenance, we've talked about. Replacement of technology and vehicles. Those are all things that we will have to be accumulating money towards over time. But of course, it's very difficult to increase the reserves while the state and the district are still in fiscal recovery. We have a lot of needs. It's very hard to take money out of your budget and say, I'm going to put that in Fund 17 for the economic uncertainty reserve, and I'm not going to replace those vehicles because, again, it's just very difficult. So the best approach to increasing your reserves is to use one-time funds. So if the state's choice with their extra budget dollars is to provide more funding to pay off the mandated cost backlogs, that would be an ideal time to put that money in Fund 17. It's not appropriate to get one-time money for salaries because, okay, you had money to pay at once, how are you going to pay it next year? The other good way to build our reserves would be if the keys or property sale does close and we get those sale proceeds, certainly part of that could be used, dedicated to our reserves. So any questions about that? And then the reserve cap, I think we've talked before about how Proposition, well, SB 858 has language that said, if Proposition 2 passed, there will be caps on reserves. And then that was included in the Proposition 2 language. For our district, it would cap our reserves at 6%. There are many, many, many conditions that must be met before the cap would apply. The soonest it could possibly happen is about eight years because we have to be in Test 1 and Prop 98, and state has to put some money in there, rainy day fund. But still, 6%. I mean, if you look back, we got into fiscal distress very quickly that the difference between 6% and 3% is, you know, a half-month payroll. So, or one-month payroll. So it's clearly bad public policy. I am sure you will hear about this at CSBA. The other advocacy groups, ZACSE and CANSV, are also joining to get to cap repeal because just because it's not going to happen now is no reason to leak the law on both.
Well, there are a lot of provisions in there that one can use reasonably. A lot of it has to do with the same stuff you saw on the slide before, hearings and designating reserves and explaining why you have reserves. I'm not as worried about, again, this would be a great problem to have.
No, I'm not.
I'm not as worried about, I mean, there are these super tenants and business officials that are very worked up about it. I would not fit into that category.
Well, I agree. There are people who are already adopting resolutions and doing, and it's, no. This is just, if anyone's wondering where do we stand, we're years away from figuring out about it. So in terms of what's next for our own budget, period one attendance is due to the county office on January 5th. Governor's budget proposal for 1516 is to be announced around January 9th. We'll see if this year's budget matches the May revision or if we're going to have another surprise. It's very difficult. When they say plan on this, and then five months later, they come back and propose things that they said they weren't going to propose, it's hard to feel really confident making predictions based on the governor's budget proposal. Last January, he said STIRS is a year away. We're not going to ask you to do anything about STIRS. And then May, it was like, here's a 1.5% increase to your expenses that you had no plans to deal with. Well, too bad. And that's part of why they backed off. Well, one of the big things related to both program transfer and the new funding model that our SELPA, our Special Education Local Plan Area, which essentially is the county Snoma, has adopted is there is a new funding model. I personally, no district in this county has the data to do their own calculation because a big part of the calculation depends on everyone's numbers. Everyone's ADA, everyone's count of severely handicapped students. So we'll be waiting for the calculation from the SELPA. This was the calculation last year that led the county office to change our certification from positive to qualified. That's second interim. But we got it after March 15th, which is the due date for the report. So we're hoping that it will come timely and with the change of the funding. Last year, it was just late, the funding model hadn't changed. This year, the funding model is changing. We've been very conservative. We have not increased our special education revenue in our budget. We believe it will change based on our people counts. Well, it's going to increase, is it going to increase $100,000 or $500,000?
Yes.
Or some other number. So that's a significant potential upside. I'm not concerned that it's going to decrease. That seems very low risk. The second interim report will then come to the board for certification at the March meeting. And then we'll go into budget development. Okay, one other item on the supplement at the bottom, transportation funding, again, intended to include this in the multi-year narrative. So our transportation services were part of the West County Transportation Joint Powers Agency, Joint Powers Agreement. Under current law, this is the last year that JPAs will get transportation funding. The agency's director actually talks to legislative staff. He's very confident that that will get fixed, that the state understands.
It was a legislative error.
Yes, it really was a drafting error that they just forgot. So we're, we think it'll be fixed. The county office thought it was important for us to disclose that it is potentially $537,000 in our district. So our, the money we used to get when we were with this first student now goes straight to West County Transportation. With this language, there's no provision for it to come to us or go to them, so we believe the legislature will fix it. If they didn't, if they don't, for some reason, we will have to make some decisions. We just cut other things to pay for, the sites go back home to school. I'm not worried it'll happen, but then, how much is that risk?
When will we know that?
Well, we will have to decide whether we can project it or not when it's time to go down the budget in June. Yeah, predicting how quickly the legislature would act is difficult. They are supposed to be looking at overall transportation funding because there's been a lot of uproar that it's very inequitable across districts. Districts, more rural districts feel, you know, it's, even if you look at, say, a western high school district.
Governor, Governor Brown's not a fan of spending a lot of money in transportation.
That is true, but there are all those legislators in LA Unified, which, you know, that district is drawn. So there's a lot of legislators affected by LA Unified. So there are people who think it's really important to fund home-to-school transportation. And again, home-to-school is in the snomer in this case because the biggest part of our transportation is transporting special education, transporting.
Transportating.
That's a, should be a word, right? Transporting special education students, and that is the biggest part of the funding as well. And it's probably a little harder to imagine that they wouldn't fix that part of it. They may say you don't need to do home-to-school, but special ed transportation is required by law, so. But it, you know, there's always a list. And of course, at the back of your multi-year projection, pages 95 and 96, I list a selection of things that could be worse for our projections, and then things that could be better, like more money for gap funding, more enrollment, selling keys or property, and even in energy savings. We're going to be.
One of the assumptions that will have to be built in the future multi-year projections, it's important to note, will be measure D. So starting with our June budget adoption in 2015, our new next out year will be then 1617.
No, 17.
Our next, it's the second year out.
Okay.
So the counties, you know, current year is the most important. You know, if you look at it in order, we can make better reasonable guesses about the next year, the least reasonable guesses are educated guesses about that last year out. But we'll have to show in that 1718 multi-year projection, the loss of all measure D revenue. I don't anticipate any change between now and June and another election or, I mean, we are actively looking at the program and what the best opportunity might be to revisit that, have another election. When would be a reasonable time to do that? Would there be changes in terms or amount? But none of that will occur before June. And so in 1718, in the 1718 multi-year projection, we'll have to show the loss of somewhere around $1.3 million. So we'll make 1718 look very catastrophic.
Well, realistically, we would probably project 7% to 8%.
Yeah, I mean, right, it just, it makes it a very odd process that we go through. That will work through with the county office. And that is the first interim report.
Can I get a motion to approve the first interim report as of October 31st, 2014?
I move the first, that we approve the first interim report as of October 31st, 2014.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion theories. Adoption of Resolution 1415-17, Declaration of the Results of the November 12, 2014 General Election.
I would just briefly point out, we maintain a great relationship with the county in this area. We appreciate them working with Secretary McKeon. And really, I was shocked, not in our district, but for the first time I've ever seen such a change. And we keep track, and we check in with them on how the votes are being counted. We may see that there was a change in an election in another school district, so it can happen. So we did make sure that trustee L. Farrell really became trustee Farrell, but, but we appreciate, they provided our district great service. Sometimes our estimates of what the elections will cost are off in higher mode.
Sometime before March, I hope I'll just don't.
You do pay for all our elections.
Can I get a motion?
I move we adopt Resolution 1415-17, Declaration of the Results of the November 14, 2014 General Election.
I'll second that.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Farrell, next. Castillo.
Yes.
Justiola.
Yes.
Justiola. Adam Swobinski, slide 115, I'm believing.
Based on board discussion last time, we see the original pledge that's submitted and then edited for our district. and then edited for our district. I had a discussion with trustee Jolardi regarding the issue with regards to posting on the CRP USD website and so that, rather than spend dollars on attorneys to see if that was legal or not, just have that removed. There are plenty of other places that it could be posted.
And I think we had plenty of conversation last time, I think it speaks for itself. Unless there's any additional comments.
May I get a motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve the pledge for ethical campaigning.
May I get a second?
I'll second that.
Paul Weber?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Well, I think that's a sad, very, very sad statement to our community. I was really hoping that this board would look at itself as having higher standards in representing this community.
I have to second what Ed said. Going forward, I think a lot of harm was done with this last election. A lot of scars are out there, a lot of hard feelings, a lot of negativity towards the district. And if we don't restore that by not, and by not voting for this, kind of just puts, you know, puts a stake in it and says we're not going to go forward with that. So I'm upset with that. I'm saddened and I hope that, that basically this says, in two years, we can go right ahead and continue to be negative.
I agree.
And it doesn't, doesn't bode well for, for ethics, it doesn't bode well for bullying, it doesn't bode well for the standards for this district, and it says that the majority of this board doesn't support that.
No, I don't think that's what it says. I think I've made it clear, clearly the last time, the reason I wasn't supporting that, and I would be perfectly happy to sign the form that we get when we run for our position and show that to everyone. I run our campaign, and that's what I expect from anyone else I'm running against. I can't control anyone else. I can ask people to do things and not do things, but I, you can't control anyone else. Everybody has the right to do their own statement.
It wasn't really about controlling, it was just about making a statement that we have higher expectations. And yes, you're correct, we cannot control what other people do or say, but as an elected body, I think it's important to say that we have higher standards. And that's black and white. And obviously, the majority of this board does not believe in higher standards, and that's a sad statement to the community.
I do 12G, acceptance of gifts and donations to schools. I'd like to accept the items we received at John Reed in the amount of $450 from Jill Carroll. We received $350 from Ana Vista, from, I can't pronounce the last name, from the county reading. Technology Middle School, Fred and Terry in Alamo, $4,500.
Common?
Yeah.
Are they worth more than them?
Yes, we think some of them are, and we are going to discuss with the donor whether, we're going to discuss with the donor whether it's okay for us to sell them, either to district members who expressed interest or do an eBay process or something.
Or will they be protected for libraries if they're cafeteria?
Well, the one, so, anyway, we've left it to the principal to reach out to the donor and, and just make sure they would be okay with us trying to raise more money to the school. And then some will be retained for the students.
Gifts for Ranch at Katari High School from Kaiser Permanente in the amount of $67. Wells Fargo Educational Program in the amount of $269. Anonymous for Carnegie Hall Trip, $1,000. High Flying Foods Inc. in the amount of $1,000 for office furniture. Ranch at Katari Cougar Boosters in the amount of $15,000. And CRP USD, the John Jordan Foundation in the amount of $1,504,000, for a total of $24,140.
Just as a point of context, this typically would not be all we get from the districts. And this is, you know, they give the district funds like this usually twice a year, and it really does make a difference. That's, those things we would not have listened to.
Who is the John Jordan Foundation, is that something?
Jordan was. So he's got his own foundation and there's a process for teachers, or teachers to write grant applications and get funds.
Thank you. So is this a teacher grant recipient? What's the $1,500, or is this just up to your...
No, 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 it's specific people. So who wrote grant applications and have to report back to the foundation, they send the check to the district. But I think this amount is for five or six people, various amounts.
Just as a brief reminder, you do look at all of the donations very carefully and make sure that we understand what we're receiving and that when we present them, we were saying we can accept all of the strings on that aspect of the district. And there are donations that we have actually rejected as, you know, not being something that we think we should receive as a district.
And sometimes it's for a simple as people giving us their old computers and we can't have 20 different models of computer stuff, we kind of dispose of problems, right?
Or if, you know, for instance, on a grant, if there were reporting elements or spending elements that we really couldn't support.
We've turned money down from developers who wanted us to support their project that was not supported by the community also, and we don't play that game.
Do we need a motion?
May I get a motion?
I move we accept gifts and donations to schools and districts in the amount of $24,140.
May I get a second?
I'll second.
Paul Weber?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 13, feature agenda items.
A couple things, I don't know if it's an agenda item, but just clarity, do we, with the Clean Power, will the district have a choice between PG and Sonoma Clean Power? And does that affect any of our, any of our rebates or any of that kind of stuff?
It should be a savings for the district. I know, I went to one of the presentations and that was before Roanoke Park signed on, it was only Katari. And there was projected savings just for one school, but at the time, because of the way the mapping isn't done, it wasn't really sure as the Unified District whether we could or could not partake in only one community. And that's why I'd asked that we had a letter written to Roanoke Park encouraging them to give us that option. But then afterwards, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but if I remember correctly, they determined that even if Roanoke Park didn't join on, we'd still be able to get savings through just Katari.
I think that's true.
On that, we are compiling, we've gone back a year just to make sure we have a list of all requests for information or agenda items around the, whether, in the report we can share.
Something I'd like to see us do, since the county, Denise has gone and we have a new person there, none of us have met them, and I think it would be good for Tracy to also kind of hear how that relationship works and what their role is, if we had a conversation and is it Serta, Saretta? Saretta? We get a conversation meeting with him, I think that would be good for all of us.
We can make that a blast.
Have they had any meetings scheduled for December or January?
They're waiting for the interim report, and they typically wouldn't be done if they're reviewed until January.